Okay, clock on the wall says, uh, looks like six thirty-one. So, uh, we'll open our June twenty-second meeting of the Brooklyn Planning Board.
No, we don't, I'm surprised.
And just a quick note, this, uh, meeting is being recorded for broadcast only, local cable TV.
But June, uh, the, July thirteenth.
Sorry about that, July thirteenth meeting, I was looking at the minutes of the last one. Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, first agenda item is the minutes of June twenty-second.
Make a motion to accept, so we can get to the...
Hi, second.
Two seconds. Discussion? Uh, Dick has raised a concern about the longevity of the driveway, believes that it needs to be a norm, advised it's not necessary because it's not a subdivision. And Dick Williams says, yes, it is, uh, it's, we are allowing them to put in three, or two to three houses or driveways into one driveway. And I feel that we should set up with the blessing of Quinn Engineering, what is there for roadway?
Which requires specifications?
Required specifications for estate lots with shared driveways.
That doesn't sound like a bad idea to me.
Because I don't, you know, I don't want these people to feel, and, you know, get in there and then five years later, for crying out loud, it's all screwed up.
They've had issues.
Sharing that screen. It's so...
And all I'm asking is, is, if Quinn give an idea, or, you know...
It's a little bit, it's a little bit fuzzy in my mind, because in general, the planning board's authority is over the roadways. Yet, we are taking some authority on common driveways.
That is correct.
So...
Could we put that in as a, um, because a common driveway requires a special permit for three, not two.
Yeah.
But if they're doing a special permit, could we put that in as a condition?
We, the thing is, we do have some specs.
There are some specs there, but I asked, did Quinn?
No.
No, yeah, so...
Actually, I think we just kind of came up with them ourselves.
No, I'm, I'm just feeling, I, I would like to get this on an agenda sometime down the pipe here, and, uh...
I don't know, I don't have anybody else.
I don't want it brushed aside. Okay, now, thank you.
Okay, anything else on the minutes? Any further discussion? Well, they have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, you don't have to do roll call, everybody's here, right?
Correct.
That's correct, all members are here.
Now, um, we have a public hearing, but it is not scheduled until, uh, seven o'clock. So, this is an objection, I think we take some of the other items on the agenda out of order. Let me skip ahead to number four. Yes?
Yes. Sure, is there, is there a number four?
Is there a number four? Yes, Maple Hill Estates, and I don't believe we have any information regarding Maple Hill Estate.
Oh, that's correct, there's no, is there any reports or anything else on this one?
Only comment that I would have is, as I would be thinking that Mr. Blair is probably going to be looking for road acceptance at Waltown Meeting, uh, it might not be a bad idea if he gave him a jingle to say, well, it's time to get everything in order.
Is there any idea or approximate time? They haven't sent the meeting yet.
They haven't sent it yet. Well, usually in November, early November. Waltown Meeting?
Because it's typically more...
Usually November. Frequently, I should say frequently November.
It usually hinges on free cash being certified.
Well, that's usually the come down of the wire. The last fifteen months have all just been one long day, so I really can't give you perspective.
I just remember that always seems to be the, the point of trying to get the meeting, is getting free cash certified.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And anyway, just trying to kind of, you know, eliminate another Bear Hill.
Yeah. It's only like a hundred days away roughly, so time flies.
Okay, onward to, uh, item five, Bryce Lemon Estates. I believe we do have a report from Quinn.
It's pretty chummy.
Yeah, I didn't notice anything exciting in, uh, in the report. Through all of this stuff to get through it. But by the way, I'm assuming that he is going to be also looking for road acceptance for phase three of Bryce Lemon at fall, so I'm going to see the same thing that he said about Maple Hill.
Phase three or phase two?
Oh, phase two, excuse me.
Yeah. Please.
Yeah, no phase three, yeah, no.
Has, Norm, do you know if you've got, or maybe you or Dave got any correspondence on that issue with the homeowners and that, that water issue?
Uh, no correspondence, uh, I took a ride up to Bryce Lemon this afternoon, and I see no evidence we've done any work of creating that new drainage system.
Yeah.
For lack of a better word.
This is just my opinion, before we move forward, that needs to be fixed. I don't know if we can enforce it, but...
Well, that's phase two.
Two.
That's phase two.
Phase two, yes.
If I may, I would suggest that you do in fact have jurisdiction, because they're having con- new connections into the drainage system.
Going into...
By design. That's, that's part of the design.
The retention pond, yeah, so that...
Just not just the detention pond, it's actually connections from the rear of the houses on Woodside into the drainage sys- into the stormwater system.
Oh, okay.
I call it drainage, stormwater.
So those have to be on the Asbilly plans?
Yes.
That we would get?
Yeah.
So, probably should mention to him, he's got to get that work done, and drawings Asbilly before.
And now, on, on Quinn's, on that particular thing, it's not so much for Quinn, but way back on page six, I have a question.
Page six.
On page six, it says, "Hi Paul," but down in the last paragraph, uh, this is Clea talking to the Army Corps of Engineers.
Oh, on that thing.
And this is about an eighteen-foot bottomless culvert. Is this on our plan in our office at this moment?
This isn't part of this discussion.
This is, yes, this is, this is part of Bryce Lemon.
Okay.
I... First of all, I know absolutely nothing about this whole thing, I don't know how we even necessarily got a hold of it.
Uh, hopefully by the rope, and let's pull it in, get it taken care of.
And...
Because why should this gentleman behind me get all the grief?
I'm just saying, I, you know, I don't, I don't even know what it's really all about. At least Clea's sharing this term.
Yeah, if it's not on the plans, and I don't remember seeing that on the plans, again, it doesn't mean that it isn't there.
Okay, well, you're just getting sharing now. Who else is in the meeting?
Dave, do you have any better insight into this?
Uh, are you wondering where this correspondence came from, why the board has it?
Yeah, and what is our...
I don't know that there's any involvement of this board, this is, uh, an Army Corps of Engineers issue with, to the applicant, this was submitted to the board as informational only, um, this was sent from Conservation Commission. And it's information that they had, that they thought, should be going to the record for the planning board.
That's fourth, that's why I've asked, is this eighteen-foot bottomless culvert part of the plan that we have on hand? Because I think that's a...
I guess that would be a question for Quinn.
Correct.
Can we send that question to him and ask Carl?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll send him the correspondence, I'll highlight the relevant section and ask him the question about the culvert, uh, I'll take him to this page here.
Okay, very good.
Eighteen-foot bottomless culvert.
That's huge.
That sounds like a wetland crossing. That's what we used on phase one. Those are bottomless culverts.
I think those are the planning to use for phase four at the wetland crossing there, I don't remember if it's eighteen, but...
That's what Mr. Blair is saying, it's eighteen foot.
And it says lot seventy-four?
Well, it said seventy-four, not seventy-two, and then... Email says seventy-two R at Preso. Has anybody seen it?
I'd have to, I'd have to pull up the plan.
I just want to make sure that we have the correct plans on file, I mean, if the Army Corps of Engineers and Common Common are involved in this, I want to make sure that what we have is correct.
Okay, so Dave, you'll...
Yeah, I'll follow up with Quinn on this, yeah.
It looks like it's in phase four and five, but to Dick's point, it should be on the plans, the total Bryce Lemon plans, if I'm reading this right. Okay.
Okay, anything else on the, on Bryce Lemon?
No, everything's there, it hasn't washed away? With the rain moving ahead?
No, actually, like I say, I took a look at both ends of it today, and, uh, it, I didn't see huge amounts of mud on the roadway, you know, or anything like that, and for that matter, even on those lots, uh, I did not notice, normally when they get, you know, washed up, it's a silth deposit.
Yeah.
And I didn't see anything.
Okay.
So, which, and again, Dave, I discussed this a little bit, I've, I've kind of got a hunch, that the biggest problem with that water is probably in the wintertime, when there's frost in the ground, and then you do get a rainstorm with frozen ground, so the water can't percolate, it just runs off, you know, like mad.
Comes out of the top.
Yeah. That, that's my, I don't know that, but that's my thought. But anyway, uh, it still needs to be corrected, I don't think there's any doubt about that. And, uh, actually, I didn't even really notice much in the way of washing anything in, uh, phase three. Looks like they had made a couple of sort of meager brick piles with some sander gravel around a couple of the catch basins to try to catch more of the water, but I don't think that really was.
Did they ever fix, wasn't, and I think it's phase two, there was those containment asphalt bumps, or...
Oh, they're still there.
Okay.
Yeah, those won't go until the pile, when the pavement goes on.
But they did add a catch basin.
At that area?
Yeah, to, to relieve the, the further runoff across the road, across Woodside and down.
Great, thanks.
I did notice that all of the heavy equipment is gone from phase two, the only thing that got left there is a couple of little mini excavators, so I'm getting the feeling they're probably getting rid of many, said the loom and seed, you know, on that strip beside the sidewalks and that sort of thing, maybe, I don't know. There's still obviously some work to do with the detention pond.
I was going to say, they still got to clean them out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because phase two includes the detention pond and everything.
Yeah, detention pond was full, really full.
Yeah.
Just my unofficial observation. Okay, anything else, Bryce Lemon? No? Okay. Then, I guess we're on to Britton Estates subdivision, and I don't think we have anything in writing on Britton.
Uh, no, there's, you don't have any reports from the consulting with the mayor. However, on this one, we do have a revised plan set that was received, and was also a request for some waivers, as previously discussed by the board, so I think we'll be looking to have that at the first August meeting, advertise for the waivers from the Landscape Islands, and to change the width of the crossing.
And again, just for your information, since I live on Britton Drive, I took a quick jog down Britton Drive to see what was happening, and they're logging like mad. And I just find it kind of interesting, because I went down there, and there was a big chip, chip truck, trailer truck, they're chipping, you know, a lot of the stuff.
He said he wasn't going to. Not Clea, this is Paul Davis, he's got a brand new, new thing that is going to burn it, and create charcoal, which will be then, uh, left.
Okay, well, not, not to, not to prolong this whole thing, but I stopped, and I did walk in, because there's a foot of mud, at least, uh, but there was definitely, it was a, I'll call it a chip truck.
Yeah.
They were grinding the wood, whether it's chipping, grinding, or whatever, and I did find it kind of interesting, because I couldn't see what they were feeding it, but the stuff was going into the trailer truck, and then there was another conveyor that was shooting out the smaller stuff, in other words, anything...
Charcoal.
This, this big, was just being shot back out again and discarded.
He, he, he got federal credits and state credits for this particular machine, because the, the chips aren't being, uh, I think I told you people before, that the, that the plant, electric plant there, they're not paying anybody, and, and it's all stacked up over there and all that jazz. So, he picked up this machine that burns it, it burns the limbs, and creates charcoal, and then the charcoal is, they say it's supposed to be something like, I, I don't know how many years before it'll dissolve, so it captures the carbon and holds onto it for a length of time, so...
Okay.
And that's why he's, he gets all kinds of, you know, credit.
Carbon capture credits.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, that one was pulling out, and I have to give the guy credit, he pulled out of the place, left a nice trace of mud down Britton Drive, of course, uh, which is scenario of things to come, obviously.
Yes.
And I have to admit, I don't think he went more than three miles an hour all the way out Britton Drive.
Wow.
With that thing. He was just idling at low gear, uh, so, anyways, he was pulling out, then a regular logging truck, one of these triple thing, logging trucks, was coming in to load up the timber, so, that's what's happening right now there, anyway. Okay, uh, still got ten minutes to go here.
We'll get through all these.
I think we'll get through almost everything here. Anybody else have anything on Britton?
Only thing, Norm, is, Davis, he sent you a PDF of that plan that we could get, I know there's the hard copy, but if we had the PDF, at least the board could have it if questions came up, so we could review the drawings.
Yeah, um, hard to see about that, I don't know if there's a file size issue.
Okay.
If there's not a file size issue, it could be zipped, or the board could be brought to a, a link, sure, there's some solution to it, I'll just put on the list of things to find out about it.
As long as we don't get Google drives.
Okay, Bear Hill Two subdivision. And you have, I think this is one, we have two Quinn reports, I think?
Yeah, one's from the twenty-fifth of June, and the other one is from July first.
I don't know, I didn't see anything of extreme purpose.
One thing I didn't see, Norm, is, I remember asking if Quinn could look at the plans and make sure the plans that we approved, and I'm throwing a number, I don't know exactly, eight, nine years ago, are the same plans that he's building to, because that was the issue on number six, Arrowhead, the app, or the owner believed that the plans were different.
Well, I don't know if he believed, thought the plans were different, or that he was just not building it according to the plan.
That too, either one of them.
And I asked Carl if, you know, he could go up to observe whether the roadway was being built in the location according to the plan, and said, you know, by eyesight, he really couldn't, the only way, they would have to literally stake it out, and had to do that.
Wow.
So...
All right.
I was just going to say, how can you not, you know, plus or minus ten feet or something, I mean, at least, uh...
Well, I think, I think this guy maybe talking about plus or minus a foot.
Oh, no. Meaning he lost it for the property?
I don't even know if he's, I, I don't know.
Okay. It's just if...
Damn. All I know is, they're not talking to each other anymore.
Yeah, it's attorney time.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure from our perspective that the road's being built to the plan, that's the only thing I wanted to do, because if it's been offset to allow houses to be built on the west side because of twelve years of erosion or anything like that, I have a problem with that. If you shifted the roads to make room for other houses, should have come back before the planning board if that happened. If it's a foot, I'm not going to have a big issue with that, if it's ten or twenty feet, I'm going to have an issue with that.
I would seriously doubt that it's anything like that.
Okay.
Technically, you know, I guess we could request Clea to do, you know, an exact survey and stake it. And then have Quinn go up and look at it.
Part of me says yes, just...
You know, I, I guess, it, it's, it's a question, do we have evidence that he's doing it incorrectly, or are we simply addressing a complaint?
And then how do you verify his staking of it?
Well, that's the other side of it, you know, it'll be his survey, that's going to stake it.
When did this complaint come in?
A month ago, at this point, started maybe a month ago.
Something like that, I mean, it's, it's between the parties, it appears to be at this point.
Yeah.
Um, so it's really, I guess a month now, give or take.
Do we know if the complainant had it surveyed, or if he doing, is he just doing it from his perception?
I would almost guarantee he didn't.
Do you know?
The thing is, the complaint brought the house from Clea, and I'm sure there was an agreement in, you know, what other purchase the sale had, because Bear Hill Two was approved, you know, at that time, and...
So he was the last house?
First house.
First house.
Yeah, it was Mr. Helly's property, that he used to, rich when he owned that house, and it's been moved around, whatever. I just, again, I talked to the applicant, or the complaint when I was up there, and this is all hearsay, it's not the, I don't have any, any evidence, he said that he talked to Tom and showed him a plan, and said, "Well, I'm working off this plan, and it's not approved or stamped," and that, that raised my ears, like, really? It better be approved, and it better be stamped. So that's the only reason, Norm, I brought it to you, is like, if, if it's changed, I, I think the board needs to know about it, if it's a foot or two, maybe that can be considered Asbilly type of changes, but twenty or thirty feet, eh, that means the water and sewer is going to be in a different place. And that was, that, that was the only reason I made the request, to find out, you know, if the plan they're working off of and building to is the plan that was approved by the board.
I, I agree, we should find out.
If there's a typical complaint between two neighbors, who pays for the survey? Is that something that's only... I mean, how, how, just say, just say it's a whole nother over here, there's just two houses, and they've got a dispute on where the property line is, how does that work out in that case, and is this a similar type?
That's not us. The roads are the only thing that we deal with.
And that's what this...
That's the, that's the, I, when they start telling me about all of the property lines, I said the planning board can't get involved in that.
So this is the front, this is the front of the house?
Yeah, no, the front property of the house, where the road...
Depth of the sidewalk.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine if it's moved a foot or so, because, eh, that's, that's, you know, but the end, when, when the complainant said that they're working off plans that weren't approved or stamped, that's what perked my ears.
Wow.
And again, it's hearsay, I don't know that, that's why I wanted to just check it.
It could also just been another copy of the plan that was printed for them, and it just didn't have it, that's...
Yeah, it wouldn't have.
No way of knowing at this point, we don't have enough information.
But I was just basically dotting the i's and checking and crossing the t's to make sure that, just on my previous experience, how things sometimes got forgotten and not...
Yes, and I agree, I think we should just ask if they could, you know, check it out.
I'm going to ask Clea, please, you know, has it been changed?
Oh, in other words, no, no, just, I'll just, like, Clea asking, is the roadway being built according to the plans that we have, the plans and record that we have?
I'm good with that, if we get a letter back, Norm, saying yes, then I'm fine. Yeah, I'm fine, just, I want to have some documentation, so if, at, when we go to the Asbills, if Quinn goes out there and he's looking at the drawings, looking at the road, and they, it doesn't add up, we asked for this, he said it was, and now it isn't, so what do we do? I know it's after the fact, but I don't know what else to do, I mean, short of going out there and resurveying and...
Anyway, yeah, honestly, among other things, the two houses, they're not happy with what's happening with the driveway.
Yeah, but that's not our problem.
No, it isn't.
And that's why I said to them, I can't really do, all I can remember about is the road, from a planning board's perspective, so...
They got any drainage issues?
No, they just, it was, they're saying it wasn't there, and I, and I said, "We, as planning boards, can't get involved where your driveway is and your lot lines, that's not, the planning board's concerned, the road is what's our concern."
The roadway, and putting in the roadway, they'd have to excavate to the appropriate level, okay, which means if you come down off of their driveways, at the end of their front lawn, they've got a trench three feet deep, until they gravel it to bring it up to grade and all this kind of nice stuff, and they've got temporary access to their driveways. So they're probably not happy with it. We're talking about Bear Hill.
Yeah, uh, Bear Hill Two?
Yeah.
Uh, what, the situation with the fifty-page lawsuit they sent off to me the other day?
Oh, no, I, I don't care about that one, that's their problem with you, what I cared about was, is the road being built to what we approved eight, ten years ago, that's my concern.
One hundred percent. Bring Carl out there and have him, I, when I had so much trouble with these people, I wanted to make sure that I was doing it right, and the grades are perfect, we checked them seventeen times, the road is, the road alignment is exactly where it should be, checked it a thousand times.
That was, I was saying to Norm, that's all I want, is basically saying, you're building it to what we approved, and if that's that, then any, any issues between driveways and your road is between you and the homeowner, not the planning board.
Well, the planning board, at the time, approved, and in their approval said, on the plans, said, you know, where the driveway was going and, and so forth, if you look at the plans, I believe you guys have a copy of them here, you'll see where the, where the driveway goes on there, why? The point is that, um, with, they, they took the old driveway that was there and removed it and put a new one in, and it would have been fine, except for it was six feet higher than the road, I, I couldn't make it work, I, the last thing I wanted to do was cause them all kinds of pain like that, and, um, so, we had an agreement with them, we were going to put a new driveway in, we showed them where we were going to put it, and they were okay with it, and that night, they retracted it, they said, "Don't touch it, we don't want you near it, you know, you're in the wrong, you're not working in the right place, we, we know you're not, and you misrepresented this, and you misrepresented..." You know, you're in the wrong, you're not working in the right place. We, we know you're not, and you misrepresented this, and you misrepresented that. It's just a, it's a nightmare, but we had to take the driveway out. I had to, because the road, they put it right down the middle of my road. I mean, I don't know how else to explain it. And I was more than willing to put them, put a new driveway in and fix it and do anything that they, you know, we had agreed to. And they threw me out, said, don't go near it. So.
All right, well, all I was asking, and this was through Norm, was that we just, again, it's what they told me when I was out there, that they had talked to Tom and he'd said that the road, the plans he was building the road to was not stamped and not approved, and that perked my ears. Again, it's just their version what they told me. And I said, well, let's just get something in writing from Cle saying the road's being built to what it was. Then it's a moot point. We're protected from the planning board's side, and then any disagreements that they have is with you, not with us.
How about if you get that from an engineer? How about if Carl says that?
I'm fine.
Yeah.
I think he already was out there and couldn't.
Pay him first time, come out, and we'll shoot the grades, we'll shoot where the road goes, we'll do it with him there, have him witness it.
Oh, that'd be great.
And.
He said that's what was necessary. I asked him if he could just go out there and visually, you know, take a look, and said, without it being staked, no, he couldn't.
No, he couldn't. You're right.
I just had a quick question, just 'cause I'm still wrapping my head around this whole situation. You built this house?
I didn't. It belonged to Rich Helly.
And then they moved their driveway after you started access?
So what happened was, I bought Rich Helly and Spence Laporte's house back two thousand six, two thousand seven, whenever, whenever it was. And with that came a bunch, a bunch of front lots, and I, and I subdivided the property. And I made those two houses part of the subdivision. So I made the road fit, I made everything fit where it went. And, and so that those houses would, would fit in there perfectly, but they were existing homes.
You didn't take any of those houses down? You just added a road?
I just put a road in front of them and added another twelve lots, around fourteen lots or something like that around them. And provided water, sewer, and all those things.
And then sold?
And then I sold the homes after. Yeah. And they have, it says right on there, D Lot Two Rev, which is exactly the lot that's on the plan.
And they bought the house with all the work had already been?
No, no, not at all.
Hadn't even been started.
I got you, okay.
Yeah, when we started the work, we ended up, on Six Arrowhead, we ended up tearing out the septic. And then we had to put, we had to hook them up the sewer back twenty fifteen or whenever we were, we were building the road. Which we didn't.
I'm fine, Norm, if you do that.
Carl's willing to do that.
That's definitely warranted. No question about it. But everybody's mind at ease.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Anything else on Bear Hill Two?
Just the silt. He keeps mentioning silt, but of course, that's not, nothing to do with us. But he does bring it up, and it's, is that something that Quinn should contact any other entity?
If I could add to that, there's no wetland there. It's just silt running, and it's still on our property. But if it ran out to somebody else's property, that's what, what he's worried about, is it, is it moving? Is what the impression I got from Carl. He just doesn't want it to go any further than it has, so he wants it cleaned up. Which I thought we did. I could be wrong, but I think we cleaned it already. Although I don't know what the last few rainstorms have got to it.
All right, why don't you, on top of it?
Yeah, because all he's got in here in his latest report is, it's built up and it needs to be removed. On July first, his report.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Don't leave, you're not.
That being said, it's past the, as they say, the witching hour.
Move to attorney in a second.
And we have a continuation of a public hearing regarding some project on Brittonell Drive, to which I'm in a butter. And I will therefore accuse myself from any discussions. And Mr. Norwood, I hand you the symbolic gamble.
Thank you.
There's a real one behind you.
I'm good.
I know, I was thinking of it.
No, I'm good. I don't need it.
Mr. Chair Protem, if I may, before we begin, I'd like to find out who from Conservation is on Zoom, please?
It used to be in the audience.
I know that there's some, well, there was. I saw Melissa online.
Yes, because if you've got one more.
She's not here anymore, is she?
Oh, she's disappeared? Oh, okay.
So you don't have a quorum?
So we don't have a quorum. I would still like to approach the table with my other member here.
Sure.
Thank you.
I actually can't approach as an official member because I haven't been sworn in yet. So while I was voted in, I have not been sworn in.
As town council has said, if it looks like a duck and it acts like a duck.
Actually, your other members are back in this meeting.
Melissa, you're back online?
She's getting in.
So, now you.
We were asked to participate, so we have some role members here.
Correct. Chief Buckley's been asked to. Okay, I'll start this hearing off by reading, I can't pump on that, the public hearing notice, the continuation. Unless somebody, I'll just read it. This is Rutland Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing per applicant orders amended limits on public gatherings, June eighth, twenty twenty-one, at six fifty-five P M. On the petition of C B Blair Development Court for seven lot, estate lot special permits at zero Brittonell Drive. Partial ID zero forty-four dash B dash three, across from thirty-four to fifty-four Brittonell Drive. Pursuant to zoning by law, Article Three, Section Eight E, estate lots and Article Seven, special permits. You can see the meeting agenda from then for access instructions. The application can be viewed on the Town of Rutland's website, planning board page, under Planning Board packets. And this was put in by Norm Anderson, Chairman, Rutland Planning Board. It was advertised on the twenty-fourth and thirty-first of twenty twenty-one, and this is a continuation of this public, of that public hearing.
Actually, it's such a continuance.
Yeah, I'm sorry, second, yeah, the first one, I was unavailable. We didn't have a quorum, because we need a super majority to do any voting on any special permits. We need a minimum of four members. So I guess I will open it up to the board if there's any questions or concerns that we had from the previous discussion on the estate, on the request for the application for the special permit of the estate lot at zero Brittonell. We have the applicants' application with what they said was doing per the requirements of the bylaw. We have a lot design that's in the packet. We've had conversation with, on the first opening of the hearing, with individuals around the special, of the area for building. And if I'm not mistaken, Dave, we got a letter in from applicants at twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty-eight, fifty-two, fifty-five, fifty-six, sixty-one, and sixty-six and seventy Brittonell.
That's right. It's an email, and that email had an attachment with the reference, that's concerns.
Correct.
You're not listed there.
So I'm gonna ask the board, we'll have discussion first, and then we'll move it to the public from there. And part of that discussion for the board, I'll have the, the DPW chief and the ConCom, if they've got any way in on that too. And we also have a letter from Chief Buckley, if I'm not mistaken, Dave, regarding the proposed construction for requests for the road on Brittonell, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, email dated June twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
With six points, some were conditions, some were observations.
Yes.
Recommended condition.
So I'll open up to the board if there's any questions, comments, concerns.
Has Mr. Blair seen this list?
Let me see.
The comments and concerns from the people up there?
Nope.
Is that something we can show him?
Dave, I think we can bring it up.
It's a public record that's in here. Would you like to go to that now, or?
Yeah, let's, let's go to that to at least get the, that off of discussion points.
So this is the application itself, the application is seven of them. They pretty much go through the same basic findings of fact. This information's further below, but on my way there, if I could just briefly describe what's in the packet here. The packet also has the letter that you just mentioned, the email from your butters, so reference, and there are nine concerns here. Turns quiet on the clock line, and here they are. I mean, I'm kind of run out of screen, but I can zoom in somewhat.
Here.
Thank you.
Hi, I see contact lens.
So I guess I'm gonna ask, and a few of these are erosion, public health. The safety, we could talk with Chief about, they says visually offensive, that'll be, we can talk about that with the scenic road. Maintain natural aesthetics, that's a part of the portion of the bylaw. And then road closures, there's a business on it. We'll get to that one. And then the two for seventh one is preserve healthy breathing conditions for residents, especially young children during construction, if I'm not mistaken. And then noise, before seven o'clock, they've brought up as an issue. So, and then ensure trees are cut down. And again, the tree issue, I've read the scenic bylaw. We can work through with the tree warden, which officially is the DPW chief, that if he has to have him a hearing, he would, the planning board would facilitate that with the, with the chief. So comments, questions on item number one? We'll take it from the board first.
Are you gonna, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Are you gonna read those?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I, I apologize. Number, number one, which is from the residents at the addresses I listed, was ensure no stormwater runoff to Brittonell Drive, especially down the long sloping driveways void of vegetation. And then they put applicable criteria from Section forty-six and forty-seven. And the reason they're bringing it up is erosion, they believe there'll be erosion damage to the road and flooding of the road and neighborhood properties with groundwater flooding issues that need, I'm sorry, I can't see that, need to be.
Exacerbated.
Exa, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we talk about these as you read?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like one at a time?
That's what I wanna do. I wanna do one, and then we'll discuss it.
I didn't know if you were gonna read them all.
No, I'm not gonna read them all. I wanna take these one point at a time.
First of all, number one, to me, if I may.
No, no, I was expecting, like I said, the three of you, Peter, Chief Buckley, and Cle yourself. I wanted to get comments, and then we can move to the public after we've gotten the board and questions that we have.
So can I, can I speak first?
Go ahead, yeah.
So, stormwater runoff, these are lots, right? So you're giving me a special permit, so there's discretionary things, but they're lots, not really, it's not really a road, it's a driveway. I mean, you take, you would do whatever you would normally do, even within a subdivision for a lot. It's not really pertinent to the construction that we're doing, is my, I mean, we're putting in driveways, but you have to put a driveway on every lot. And, you know, you, you run, always run the risk of that happening. I don't know if any of you guys have been down Brittonell Drive in the last few days. I know Norm has. There has been some serious erosion on the side of that, on the side of that road. I mean, it is wicked down there.
I think what they're saying is this would exacerbate it, if I'm not, that, that was her point. Chief Buckley?
Mind if I speak?
No, go ahead.
What we found on Brittonell, like when you first pull in off of Palmagussit, there's some houses on the right-hand side. And they have long sloping steep driveways that abut Brittonell Drive. In heavy rains, it seems to scour the road and make potholes out of the gravel road. I think that's what they're talking about.
Yes.
So if you could make an effort to keep the water from the driveway on site, or don't pave it right to the edge of Brittonell, that would make a big difference, because we can't always maintain it quick enough.
So you're basically saying that come to some type of flat area and allow it to absorb into the surrounding area?
Yeah, just try and keep it off, that's, that's the intent.
Absolutely.
Well, pave it thirty feet in.
Well, yeah, like the most recent.
And the gravel's at the end, right?
The most recent house that just pulled the driveway permit on Brittonell further down, it's on the left-hand side if you're coming in from Palmagussit just before the old Warren property, there's a new house there. I think Elbeck did that one. We asked them not to pave all the way out, and we asked them to try and keep the water up so that it would reach the swale on the side of the road and not come out into the road. That's all just to try and keep the road surface passable for as long as possible.
There's no, there's no culverts, I mean, there's culverts, but there's no parallel drainage on Brittonell. It's all just swales.
It's all swales. There are places where there's like French drain installed, or subdrain installed to keep the ice conditions down, but no formal inlets, except, I take that back, there are a couple drop inlets up near Palmagussit when you first come in, associated with that recent construction, I think, conservation.
Those were newer?
Yeah.
And they're working?
They're working.
One of those is useless.
It's not a perfect.
It's way off to the side. It's an old one, not a new one, only they made that one.
But I believe that's what they were referring to.
And those were installed by the town?
I think they were done as part of construction, but that predates.
Do you remember, Mr. Blair? Were those your houses or those were?
I, no, I don't. The ones at the beginning are.
Yeah.
I just built those right where you turn in up.
But he's asking, did you build this storm drainage that's there? There's a couple drop, drop inlets and.
We put, we, we built the house way up on, on the top of the hill, almost near Bear Hill Two. And this, the water, it just keeps coming out of the hill there.
But you added, Cle, you added that one, if you wanna call it, yeah, the big drain where the rocks are and everything to, to try to eliminate that large amount of water that was washing into Brittonell, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and I, I wanna say that that was an existing drop inlet on Brittonell Drive. I'm not sure, but I, I think it was. We, we piped that under the street and it goes into a swale over on the other side of the street. But there is an amazing amount of water that comes out of that. It runs all year.
You understand the premise, right?
And that was gonna be my next question to the board. Is that something that we should put in as a order of condition as part of the special permit?
That would be, how would you go with that to control water?
I would probably, what the chief was, he'd basically come up with a section of driveway that needs to be flattened out at the end of the property as part of the driveway that's coming into Brittonell.
Flattened or groundled or.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? Does this special permit include the construction of the houses? Or is this only for the division of the land into lots? I'm only asking because it may not, if the construction beyond the making of the lots is not covered, then it becomes an improper condition, because it's not covered. If you're talking about blacktop, that's one of the last things that's done. And that would be part of the building, not part of the, or am I wrong? I mean, this is a ConCom guy, not a planning guy.
No, no, I appreciate the input, but I thought based upon, Dave, didn't we have a section for in the special permit that indicated about, ah, I can't remember, I gotta look, I'm gonna look in here real quick.
I would like to think that to approve a special permit, we say that this is part of that special permit, would go to the end of.
I don't know, does it? Because, for example, if he moves the house, is that a change of the lot?
Well, I think we already talked about that. Well, I think we talked about that in the beginning, when, when we first looked at the lots was, you know, those houses, where he showed the houses, aren't necessarily. aren't necessarily one hundred percent where the houses are gonna go.
But it's substantial, it's a substantial representation of where this stuff is.
Correct, and the driveways are a substantial representation of where they're gonna go?
Yes, because that section's only fifty feet up on part of the special permit, you can't build driveway any, in my mind, you can't build it anywhere else but on that section that's leading into the estate lot.
Right.
So that, there's a section four in the special permit to facilitate adequate provisions of drainage, parks and open space, so I consider that drainage, I don't look the rest of the board well, so that's the reason why I was thinking of a condition.
I have, right, and I had another, even engineering, I don't know, an engineering question, maybe.
Hey, sorry, this is Melissa in conservation. Do you mind if I interject briefly?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Melissa, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, so I was just going to, so it sounds like these are nine estate lots, are, is the stormwater management included for these lots in any other design? Because my understanding is that if it is a common development of four or more lots, then it does need to meet the stormwater standards.
I didn't hear the middle part.
So, I was wondering if these lots were included in any of the stormwater designs of any, um, existing or adjacent subdivisions or properties? Because my understanding is that if you have a common development and four or more lots, then they need to meet the stormwater standards.
The front lots and the, there's, there's lots, then, there's no.
They're, they're making brand new lots, it's not adjacent to another development that'll be included with it, so.
It's not a subdivision, it's an A R lot basically that's asking.
Right, but it's still a common development under the EPA NIPD's permit. Um, and the common development under the DEP's stormwater standards follows kind of that same definition. So therefore, they should be meeting the stormwater standards for these lots.
May I, may I speak?
Cleary, go ahead, 'cause this is out of my expertise.
So the EPA is if you disturb more than an acre of land, you need to file for what's called a SWIP or a NIPD's permit, or the SWIP.
Yep.
Okay, but th- there's no, there's no stormwater because they're front lots on a road that already exists. But I still have to.
So common developments, so you can't separate them into individual lots even though they are A R lots. So I understand they're not a subdivision, but under EPA, it doesn't matter if they have existing frontage or not, it's a common development and the same goes for the DEP standards, stormwater standards.
DEP has no jurisdiction if there's no, if there's no.
So it's still, it's still the stormwater standard though that you need to comply with.
That's not correct, miss, that's not correct. EPA.
Me personally, I, 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 I appreciate, but we, we as a planning board don't have for the, the permit have any of that. Melissa, I appreciate Concom, please don't take me wrong, but I think this is some.
Drainage concern, so if they need to comply with that, then that bumps you in your jurisdiction saying demonstrate your compliance with these standards.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to. We do have to file for a NIPD's permit though, I will tell you that.
But that would be, that would be under the Concom's purview, if I'm not mistaken?
No, that's EPA.
Oh, okay.
It's a federal permit.
So I, I guess I'm gonna ask the question, Dave, you're gonna have to help me out. Who, who verifies that all that's done? Because if we don't and the Concom does it, this gets into my, my pet peeve of how do you track this?
If we, if I, if I can, I just, my understanding of that process is it is a federal permit, but doesn't that, the contact for that in the permitting process itself, doesn't that go through the DEP, up to EPA?
D C I, but you don't, the, the D C I just monitors it, but it's all done through the EPA and it's just, it's all online, it's, it, you, you get a track, you get a number, you have to post it. It's only if you disturb more than, uh, one acre of land, you have to, you have to file for a NIPD's permit, other than that. But there's no SWIP involved, I said SWIP at the beginning, I, I misspoke, there's no SWIP involved here because there's no stormwater. Uh, you don't need a prevention plan for stormwater, because there's, they're front lots. It's like, if I, if I divided six lots on Main Street, do I have to do storm, do I have to design stormwater? No, you don't. I mean, the point is, they're, they're just, they're front lots. They're just lots.
Maybe, because there's an existing MS four on Main Street, that's not the best example.
But what I wanted to get to, and what I was trying to make the point for the board is the discussion that Chief Buckley brought up on point one about minimizing the, the issue that the residents have, we could justify that under section, under point four in the special permit where it says to facilitate adequate provisions for drainage, parks and open space. The drainage is what we were talking about for the, um, special permit, which is, um, the drainage on the driveway, which is what they're discussing, so that, that's what I wanna put through the board. Is that something that we should think about for a condition?
I have one, like, engineering question. Uh, there's.
No promises.
When, yeah, when you're doing, maybe it's not, when you're doing long driveways, do you put a different pitch in the middle to the sides? You know, so when you have these long driveways, and this isn't you, you don't own a paving company, right? The pavers come in, do you regulate, does your, you know, do you guys go in there and make sure that these long driveways and stuff's gonna be sloped enough?
The answer to your question, we don't crown driveways normally. Roads are crowned.
Right.
So that the water runs from the middle and goes to the sides. Driveways are pitched so that, so that the water runs in certain places, so if the, if it goes downhill like this and your, and your garage is over here, we come down the hill and then we pitch the dri- this part of the driveway this way, so the water will run that way as opposed to into your garage. That's the only type of grading we do on a driveway. It doesn't crown.
So if some of these, some of these that are high up, boom, they're gonna have, that would be just one of my concerns, that they've got a straight shot. You could have water coming at the house and it ends up on Brittenell Drive, because it goes.
And that's what I tried to apply.
Straight down a driveway.
That's what I said, try and pitch it, keep it on site, if you can.
Can you put a, you know, in those long driveways, they, do they have those metal grates now? So right in, right in the middle of the driveway, you got a twelve-inch galvanized that goes in front of like a garage, you know what I mean?
So we just did these on, on, on River Road, remember those front lots you guys did on River Road, long driveways? And we had a problem with, with the water just coming down the driveway, 'cause it's, it's up a slope like this. The best way to do that is to pitch the driveway either this way or that way, and put a stone riprap swale on the right-hand side, the water comes down, hits the swale. The, the riprap takes the energy out of the water, and by the time it gets down to the end, it, it's, it's gone.
Did you put a pond there too or?
Yeah, we put, yeah, we had a couple, a couple, yeah.
Do you think you would have to put some sort of a pond or a?
Maybe, depending on, you know, how much water is coming down, you might have to catch some of it and detain it before it will go down, but that's all done with the lot, not as, not as much done with the, uh.
Yeah, it will happen as it goes along, and I think it's part of the conditions, these are.
Yeah, it's fine, the condition is that way, I.
He knows the stuff's gonna be happening, so it's addressed there in the time of.
I just wanted to make sure that if we need to put something in there, since this is the only time you get the opportunity to do that, it's on a special permit. Once that's up the, you can't condition a, a building. Go ahead, Marilyn, I'm sorry.
I, that's all right. I'm not sure that, to me, that seems like it's not so much our business as, as it is Concom and and we could condition that they, uh, abide by the rules or regulations, but I, you know, I don't know that's an issue that we've ever been involved in before, in my memory is how driveways get pitched and.
Yes, my only concern, again, this was me, because it goes into Brittenell and it's not a paved road and it doesn't really have a drainage system. That was the only reason I was, I was worried about the end, if, if, just because I live across from the, uh, the houses on Brittenell and I see the, the waterfall, so to speak, coming off the driveways, at least the first one, the one, the farther one down has the riprock, riprap, it doesn't cause that issue, so that's why I like what Chief had, had mentioned about coming out and eliminating any issues with Brittenell in future, so, and that's the only reason I ask.
Right, but I think we can condition it in general terms, but I think that that's as far as our.
I'm fine with that, I just wanted to make sure that we're addressing one of their concerns, and if it's with a general, we're looking for making sure to eliminate any potential road erosion or flooding, I'm fine with that, but.
With, I mean, could it even say, I don't know if you could put in the specifics, with, um, flattened driveway at the end and/or pitched dri- you know what I mean? Maybe, or something similar too, so that there's.
What I'm saying is that I don't believe that's in our purview to do that. That it's an, you know, it, it needs to be discussed someplace, but I don't think that we can specify exactly how it's gonna be done or get into the details.
Maybe you can, it's just a matter of the people saying now, what if this happens in two years and all of a sudden, now the DPW and the town is dealing with additional water and erosion on our town roads.
I'm, I'm okay, Marilyn, with putting in a, a general condition to, um, I, I don't have the words right now, but basically, um, design of the, uh, of the interface to Brittenell from the said properties having erosion control to eliminate any type of flooding or damage to Brittenell. I'm fine with that.
Right, I would be fine with that.
Control runoff would be the, be the optimal.
I don't have the words, I'm, I'm an electrical, so.
Yeah, it's fine.
Rather than.
Chief, is that, is that?
It's fine.
Then I, I guess I would ask if the board's okay with, that could be a condition we put in and we can check off number one and move on to number two. But before I go to number two, I guess I'll ask the public if there's any comment on number one.
Yeah, so there's someone in the audience would like to speak.
Okay.
Andrew Brandt, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Andrew Brandt, third day, Brittenell Drive. Um, a couple of comments on the, the stormwater and authoritative kind of oversight. It is in the special permit review criteria on the special bylaw that the board should be considering stormwater, drainage, flooding and so forth, so I, I think that it is applicable that we discuss this. And Mr. Jarvey is, is a hundred percent accurate, um, that we should be thinking about this, because the town is certainly gonna incur a large liability. Um, but I'm just looking at the special permit review criteria, and it calls out a lot of these provisions. Um, that's where we got some of our ideas when we constructed this, so I just wanna make sure that, that the board is aware of that.
What special permit is he talking about?
The, the special permit.
Open space or?
For estate lots.
Estate lots, all of the.
Estate lots, okay, 'cause there's two special permits, there's, there's open space special permits.
Yeah, no, he, he's talking about the estate lot, which is in our packet that, um, when you did the application, you put like, uh, example number four, it says to facilitate the adequate provision of drainage, parks, open space. The, the, uh, answer was all rules and regs we follow ensuring the site maintains adequate drainage. And I think, and again, this is up to the board too, if, if we put in what I tried to say for a condition, which was general, that that, I, I was thinking that was from the board's perspective, that would satisfy the town and the board. And that's why I was opening it up to the public to see what your thoughts were on that. Of the people that put in the, uh, request from the letter.
Anyone else is asking to be, uh, speak, but if anybody's in the audience on this, on for item number one, feel free, if you have.
Okay, another comment, um, this is Kirkwall fifty-two, Brittenell Drive. I think, uh, that the, you know, the statements about around the, um, effect on the road with the erosion are certainly pertinent. I think there's one other aspect of this and just to keep in mind, and that was the, the mention of neighbor properties. A number of the abutting neighbors, uh, have conditions where they already have continual pumping out of their basement or running water that's essentially an underground stream in their basement. Uh, or severe water problems that are, they have areas of their yards that are continually flooded. So that was another aspect in terms of, you know, pitching of the driveways, of the change in the water flow as a result of the removal of vegetation, those sorts of items.
Can we look at the site, the site plan and other, the specific houses that you can call out? That have any issues, I mean, I mean, water issues in basements.
It's not our property.
They can be, you know.
Dave, can you bring up the G I S map by chance?
Just to see if.
Well, I can, let me just ask you if this, uh, map that we have, some of what the application's adding.
That might work too.
If not, I'll go to the G I S map.
Okay. There we go.
Okay, I didn't raise my hand, but can I speak to that?
Um, is it Melissa? No.
No, Joyce, calling.
Okay. What address, Joyce, can you, can you give us your address, please, for the minutes?
Sixty-one Brittenell, we're right below David Reichert's house, which used to be, well, Lindblad's and then Shipman's and everyone before that. Um, we found out years ago and quite by accident that, um, we were having a, we had water in the basement, which this was not even two years after our house was built. And we found out that under, uh, David Reichert's house, and he affirmed that for us, but even at the time, the Lindblads were the owners, that there is an old steady-running creek under there. And it was flowing out, if, I mean, I think what I'm, we're trying to say is there are already, no one can say there are not drainage problems here, there are. So, it was coming onto our property. And so what, um, George Lucio did, he came back in and they dug down however deep you do a curtain drain, um, up by the barn, well, on our property, but by the barn. Uh, how far do curtain drains go down? Ten feet, whatever. They, they dug out the curtain drain from the top of our property all the way to the backyard. And there's, there's filled with stone and the PVC piping going back. And in the, especially in the springtime, it's steady-running water. Which, I mean, the problem solved. But I think what we're all trying to say is there are several properties where it's a problem, and, I mean, there's just no denying it. And that's all I'll say. I mean, I have the proof right here. That, that's, that's what, you know. That should be enough of a to verify that there are problems. Especially on the side of the road, this side of the road is what we're talking about, right? Where all the, you know, the higher ground is and the ledge and whatever.
Yes. Any comments from the board? I'm, I'm struggling to.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
I can't, I can't, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, um. As long as, it sounds like as long as everything, like what they're doing with the drainage complies and as long as, or what is, if you figure out Melissa's issue with the, um, that was in the NIPD permit. I don't think any of the boards in town have any jurisdiction over impact of, of removing vegetation or, or what, the, it's already an existing issue. So I guess what jurisdiction does planning or conservation have over the issue we're discussing right now with existing water, as long as all of the conditions are met?
Correct, and that's why I was asking the board from the perspective of at least that first one, how do we ensure that we protect the road?
Well, I mean, the road is jurisdictional, but like.
Exactly.
Abutting homes.
And Dave, you can tell me if I'm wrong, I don't think the special permit, we're looking at drainage. So we are, we do, I guess, have a little bit of a, a berth on that, but I don't know on, on adjacent properties. So I'm looking for any, uh, suggest.
Do you mind if I speak?
Go ahead.
Has it been a wetlands, about, um, has anyone flagged all the wetlands in the area? Has that happened yet?
I will ask Peter if that, uh, 'cause if I'm not mistaken, you guys have.
There has been no, there has been no filing, but the only person to ask the question as to whether they've been delineated is the applicant.
We do have some flags out there, I don't believe Julian's picked them up though. So they, we have flags, so there is some wetlands out there, but nothing that's gonna interfere, up, up above.
Yeah, there are wetlands along the sort of eastern edge, in this orientation.
Yes, yeah.
Where the long driveways are, if I'm not mistaken, okay.
Yeah, but there's, we haven't filed anything with Concom yet.
Okay.
Strictly speaking, it's a civil matter.
I was just gonna say, it sounds like a civil issue.
Yeah, all, Joyce, that, that's why I was, with the board, I was suggesting that at least from the, the, the perspective of item one, that the planning board can, and try to put a general condition in to indicate that we would eliminate the, uh, the road from having any, uh, potential issues by indicating that we would request that the end of the driveways, um, be designed or installed that would, uh, eliminate any type of runoff onto them that would cause what we've seen at the beginning of Palmagussit with the water that's causing holes and, I shouldn't say holes, but.
Potholes.
Potholes in them, so that's generally what we were trying to do, which is in our purview.
And also, I mean, I would say, and I, I don't know this, but there's always the potential that when these houses go in, what needs to be done to get these houses in could change the drainage underneath for the better.
Yeah, that's a good point.
For these houses, 'cause you just honestly don't know, right? For these houses, because you just honestly don't know right now, and I don't think anybody can say what's gonna happen once these, you know, you go, one of these different driveways and with, whatever is encountered up there with French drains and other types of drains that need to go in to make it all happen.
Groundwater modeling is extremely tricky.
Right, you just don't know where stuff's gonna go, bedrock, all those things, it's, I mean, it's.
It's not our purview unfortunately, it'd be nice at ConCon to show where all the wetland is, how much area of water shit that's coming up there, flowing into that thing, to give you an idea of what the heck could happen, but that's not our purview. I'll, I'll ask the board, I think that's at least for item one, the best that we can do for a condition at this point.
I agree.
Dick?
I agree.
Kevin?
I agree.
Okay.
Would you re, would you say that condition again, please? I can't remember. I was going to suggest something like stormwater controls are put in place to, using best management practices to, to, to limit, severely limit the amount of runoff that leaves the property.
I'm gonna look to the gentleman in the back to see if I get a thumbs up.
One more time?
Okay, now I have to repeat it, thanks.
She's up there.
Didn't write it down, did you?
Maybe it's probably got it.
Did you, would you please read it back?
Help me, Peter.
I know, that's, that's very wrong of me.
To have stormwater controls put in place using best practices to limit storm, to limit runoff.
From the property.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
I just wanted, how well control runoff so as not to impact Brittonell Drive? And that would be, that's the ultimate goal, right?
Correct.
We don't want to impact Brittonell Drive, so control the runoff, so as not to impact Brittonell Drive. It's gonna take riprap, it's gonna take big ponds at the bottom of these drivers, because some of them are really steep. And it's, it's, we have, we have to do it, we can't, can you imagine what, what Brittonell Drive would look like if, if you let it, if you let the water come down pavement for that long? It would just pick up so much speed, it would rip through Brittonell Drive, I mean, you just can't do it, you have to, you have to control it. So I mean, it, it's, it's impossible to build it like that and actually get an occupancy permit, you wouldn't be able to do it. So control runoff so as not to impact Brittonell Drive is the key.
Chief? Done, okay, I'm good for that for item one, for point one.
If I may ask another question, this is not a question that directly relates to the permit. Five years from now, the houses have been built and sold and the current owner decides to pave the driveway all the way to Brittonell, what happens?
Chief, or they have to get, if, because it's a driveway cut, do they have to come back through?
No, no, it's not a driveway cut, they're gonna use the existing driveway, they're just gonna pave it completely.
Well, that's a scenic by, bylaw, because if I remember, I'll have to go back through that if you do.
We don't do like thirty feet, we're talking, I'm sorry if you're skipping out a turn, it's more like ten. And what we tell people most often is, we regrade those Brittonell once or twice a year. So when you pave it all the way to the edge, you oftentimes run the risk of wasting your own money, because we'll just tear it all up.
You don't want.
What's going to happen, if I may, people are gonna do it anyway, because they're not gonna know, because that's half of everything that goes on in town, and it's going to happen. So that's a valid question, but the answer is, it is going to happen.
Yeah, and it's not jurisdictional, and I'm not trying to make it, so I'm not trying to condition anything, I'm just asking questions.
Well, again, I don't have it up in front of me, but I thought I remember it was point five or six, if there's any reconstruction or changing to a driveway or anything on the scenic byway, doesn't have to come, okay, I don't know, I, I'm not an expert on the scenic bylaw, so I don't have an answer for that one.
Hard enough looking at the here and now, I'll try to, five, five years down.
Absolutely.
Even if there is a provision, the scenic bylaw, it's still gonna happen.
Right.
Half the town doesn't know that exists, so.
Right.
All right, Dave, let's bring point two up, please. Yeah, see, no, I'm not gonna get a scenic bylaw, because it says repair insofar as it's stone walls or trees, so. All right, point two was wells being.
Ensure no wells become contaminated due to runoff or sewer line construction or failure.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Are they all artesian wells, or are some of these actually hand-dug wells? Because if they're artesian wells, they're not impacted by what goes on in the surface.
Correct. Okay, I do not know that isn't.
They're embedded into.
I'll ask anybody from the board if they've got any comments, and then I will ask the public who has put that in as a, number two as a question.
I, I don't know that there's any way to condition that. Frank, be it, because it's, because wells are not jurisdictional.
Correct, it's the Board of Health that has any issues with jurisdiction, when the planning board has none, if I'm not mistaken, so. I'll open it up to the public for that comment, number two.
Um, I have a comment, Joyce speaking. We have an artesian well, and ours is probably, ours is very, very deep, but ours is in our backyard, and I know our property goes back, we were talking about last time, like five hundred feet back. But if you notice where that first house is landing, it is sort of right behind our property and the property next door that potentially could have a new home. So, and, and, and back to the other situation that I spoke about, we do every spring have still, from the topical water, you know, that comes down, we do have a little flood on the side of our driveway every spring when the snow melts and everything else. It does take quite a while, but that's even with the curtain drain in there.
Okay.
You know, drain, it is a problem, and, and now that you bring up number two, I think about the fact that that house, that first house is going to be right up on the end of the back of our property, and back there is where our well is.
And, excuse me, this is Marilyn, you said that, that you have an artesian well?
That is my understanding, I mean, it's, that's what I think we have.
And your concern is that it's going to be contaminated by this other house?
Well, I don't know, I mean, you, you tell me, but it's, you, you people know better than I would know.
That, this, this doesn't apply.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the, the planning board from the, the potential of wells, that's a Board of Health issue, we really, I know I won't comment on it. I don't, I don't have the, the skills or the, it's not something within our purview.
I wanna say.
So then, when, when it, if it, if and when it does become an issue, then who jumps in?
It's the Board of Health, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so there's a way of ensuring that they don't end up having to step in, right? Is that what you're saying, or preventing them from having to?
Go ahead, Marilyn, I appreciate any help I can get.
I would suggest, because I have heard that artesian wells are dug, you know, very deep down into water channels, what do you call them, aquifers?
Right.
They're very deep and that they don't, you know, they're not in danger of becoming contaminated by anything on the surface. But as other people have said here, that, that's, you know, we're not in charge of that, so, but I would encourage you to look into that, if that, you know, to make you feel better.
Okay.
And that, that, and Dave, if that issue was something that was a concern, that could be brought up to the Board of Health, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct, yeah.
There is regulation that says you cannot build something so many feet from a well.
Correct.
So I think it's a hundred feet, isn't it?
Hundred ten, hundred ten.
So I mean, that, it's already built into the, yeah.
Okay.
And you can check, I think, how deep your well is, that should be all on file.
With the Board of Health.
With the Board of Health, where, you know, location drawings, they might have to pay for a copy of it, but you can find out how deep your well is and all that information.
I know, it's very, very deep.
So you shouldn't have any issues, honestly.
Six hundred something, okay.
And also, the, the well casing is supposed to be pounded into the bedrock.
Right.
At least five feet.
What's it called?
Bedrock.
Bedrock.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
All right, let's, if there's no other comments, Dave, do you see any hands up?
I do not.
I wanna move on to number three, which is ensure no sewer coverings on the surface of Brittonell. And the reason was for safety, height will, will protrude from road is muddy, cars and snowplows will hit them, vehicle damage, high maintenance, and visually offensive on scenic road. Board wise, I mean, that, that's part of, I was gonna go to the chief first before I say anything.
Um, I, I don't, on that drawing, how wide is the right of way? Quick.
Variable.
Yeah, it's variable with, on Brittonell.
Determined by the stormwater.
Yeah.
No, I know, it's variable, but roughly how wide is it? So let's say that the average, let's say the.
On this drawing, chief, the, the right of way seems to be wider on the side of where the houses, where the, where the special permit on, and, and again, this is the drawing I'm just looking at.
My point is, as long as this proposed sewer line is installed within the right of way, within the D to right of way, using that as your means of putting the sewer line, and not in the traveled way, you should be fine.
Okay.
So the condition would be that sewer covers would be placed in the right of way whenever possible?
They'd have to be in the right of way, it wouldn't be that way, they have to be in the right of way regardless.
Okay.
The question is, they should be one to two feet off the existing traveled way, limits of the traveled road, that's how I would phrase it.
Smee, did you get that?
I'm getting it right now.
Do you understand what I mean by that?
I do, yeah.
Do we have a width on what the traveled road limit is?
That road is really.
Technically, it's variable. It's variable, what you, what you wanna say is, you know, the exist, three feet from the existing edge of the traveled right of way, that's a field decision. Okay, and within the right of way. Do you follow?
Yeah.
Can you comment?
Anyway, I was gonna, the next thing I was gonna do, is there any comment from the public?
And the other thing I wanna comment on before I forgot, true sanitary, gravity sanitary sewers are, are better sanitary condition for the future health of the wells.
Okay.
Not that this is part of your board's concern, but actual sanitary sewers are better than subsurface disposal for overall sanitary conditions.
So having these in as opposed to having a septic system there is more beneficial for the wells?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, there is someone in the audience who'd like to comment.
Go ahead.
Kurt Grohl, fifty-two, Brittonell, so I guess just a question for the chief, so built into your response, it indicates that you wouldn't be, or you'd be okay with having those off the travel, in the right of way, but off the travel portion in terms of the multiple times per year grading of the road?
Correct, that, by having them in the right of way gives us legal access to maintain the sewer in the future. Having them off the edge of the road would, shouldn't affect grading and, and be problematic in the winter. I said two to three feet because we typically have the telephone poles installed three feet off the edge of that travel right of way for that same purpose.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Clea, do you know what the distance is on these front lots between, between the stone wall and the traveled road?
I do not.
Okay.
I think it's, it's different everywhere.
Well, that's, that's my concern, is it too close to make that practicable?
You'll have to put the wall back, you'll have to put, if you have to move the wall.
Just mush it, well, except that that infringes on the, well, it doesn't have to, because if you'd want on the property. But anybody, any other property, it could be a problem, any, anywhere from the start of the sewer line all the way to where it ties into the present sewer line.
How many feet in Brittonell itself? Wide? No, how many feet of main.
Linear.
Yeah, what's, what's the length to where it would tie?
I did a number once and I thought it was like eighteen or eighteen hundred feet or something like that from the edge of the one property down to where you were finishing it. It was like eighteen hundred feet was, again, I'm, I did this a while back.
So you're talking about six or seven years.
Yeah, yeah.
From here off.
But yeah, but the current tying isn't here, it's down.
It's not that long.
Right, yeah.
Down here.
The access to the construction.
Right, that's almost right there.
Oh, 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 oh.
Yeah.
Also, it wouldn't have to actually go, it wouldn't have to travel that far to connect.
I, well, that's the one thing we haven't got to yet, is where, where, that hasn't been part of the design yet, I'm just, I was, I wanted to look at, go through theirs, basically just assume there's gonna be a line in front.
Does it reach the stone wall?
And make sure that we're covering section three.
So I understand what you're saying, is that.
If there was not in some portion of Brittonell that he needed to put in.
A manhole cover.
A manhole, or, or any part of the, the, the. The septic, sorry, the, the sewage system, and there was not space between the travel roadway and the wall, and then.
What happens to the wall?
Well, Joe suggested he would move the wall, and I say that's easy for when he owns the property, but if he has to go across somebody else's property to make it happen, it's a much messier problem, again.
You know what he's saying? Say all of a sudden you got somebody who's got an established front lawn and that stone wall's there, and a manhole cover's gonna go right where that stone wall is. I don't know if this is the case, but say on Brittonell.
Yep.
To maintain that three feet off, you could have a telephone pole in somebody's lawn, and if that manhole cover needs to go next to it, if that scenic byway stone wall is right there, what do you do with that stone wall?
Right now, if I'm not mistaken, there's only, in, Clea, you tell me if I'm wrong, in this design that I'm looking at, there's only two homeowners that that could potentially affect, everything, everything else is your potential property that you're looking to develop, I think that's a correct statement.
That is correct, yeah.
But if, he owns it.
Except for.
Except for two lots.
Except for two lots.
So those stone walls are a non-issue.
Right, well.
He can move the stone wall on his property.
On his property, and, and again, I didn't mean to derail the hearing with this conversation because.
No, it's a good point.
It turns into non-jur, it turns into something not jurisdictional.
He doesn't wanna run into it either.
I can only do that with the planning board's permission, I can't touch that wall unless I come to the planning board and ask them permission. They're the ones who regulate, you know, that.
The scenic bylaw falls under the planning board's purview, because it's a zoning bylaw, go ahead, chief.
You can't make that decision without a detailed proposed survey.
Well, I wasn't, that's the thing, I was, I was getting at next.
And until you have, and you, or you can make that a condition, I would imagine.
Well, it actually, yes, because that's just.
Yeah, you can't do it.
It's in the.
We don't know how many manholes, we don't know where the mud's gonna be, you can't really.
So all we could do is a general condition saying that's what we would like to happen for the design.
Right.
Coming up, and that, that's all I wanted to get to, to cover this, point three was come up with a general condition, because there's a whole, we'll get down farther and, and there's other questions.
That's what I, so make a general condition that tries to keep it off the tra, the traveled.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Within the right of way and off the travel way with respect for the scenic byway, subject to future review, that's all.
Yeah, that's all we can do at this point.
Okay, without deep, it's impossible.
Yeah, I, I know exactly, because you don't know where it's gonna be fed from, how it's gonna cross, any of that stuff is part of the design that you would be reviewing.
Right.
All right, let's go to number four, ensure no debris, piles, stumps, logs, construction refuse, or nor any other unsightable items within view from Brittonell. And the reason is visually offensive on scenic road. I'm, when I read that, I was struggling with it, because there will be some during construction, but the intent was that will all be gone as part of the quote cleanup of the property, so I guess I'm asking Clea, is that the intent?
If you're a new homeowner, would you like me to leave piles of crap in the yard? I don't do it.
I'll tell you what Bobby Carson did to the back of my property.
No, we, we, we have no intention of leaving it look like that, I mean, I don't know how you were to.
I'm not sure I'm gonna do that, we can't, that's.
I don't think you can, you can tell.
Yeah, that's, that's on the lot, so I really don't have any control over that, but I'll ask the, the homo, or the, the individuals that put in this request, is there any comments on that?
Yes, is somebody in the audience who'd like to be heard?
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Andrew Brandt, thirty, Brittonell Drive, yeah, I think what we were trying to do here is just try to avoid what happened on my property, but now that's on the adjacent property, it's just a large pile of, you know, stumps and wood debris that's pretty visual from the road, and we just didn't want that to happen post-construction.
My advice, and maybe Dave, I'm overstepping, that's, that falls under the building inspector's purview, if I'm not mistaken, because once the building permits issued, Dave, you can tell me if I'm wrong from enforcement, all of that falls under his purview then?
I'm not sure that that's the case.
Okay, I'm looking for.
I think in a. I think it affects marketability of properties, I would imagine.
Okay.
I suppose a general condition might be applied here, something to the effect that the debris be removed prior to occupancy of any structures.
Clee, are you gonna build, is your intent to build out all the lots at once?
No, one at a time. One at a time. But, you know, hopefully within the next few years, yeah. But, um-
I guess I'm looking from the board, is there anything we want to condition for this number four? I, I don't see where-
You can't-
No, I don't-
It's like telling someone what they can do on their land. I mean, if I, if I have an empty lot that I have to pile some stuff on for a little while, I don't want to have someone come down and say to me, hey, you gotta get that off of there. I mean, during construction, you just can't do that. I mean, I don't know how you, you know, I mean, I would say, you know, maybe a period of years, but, you know, while I'm working, how do you, how do you eliminate or-
Actually, I saw it in a more narrow view, that if you have a house that's gonna be sold, these materials have to be off the site before the building permit condition or the COO condition for a particular lot under construction where the materials might be located. Something narrow in general, if at all. You may not even need it, I mean, it's not typical to put that.
It's work on lots, it's, it's, I mean, that's like saying you can't park an RV on your lot, on your land. I mean, how do you tell you what you can put on your land?
I'm struggling with doing anything with that. The board opinions, I got, no, 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 okay. I, if there's no other comments, I'm gonna move on to five, because I'm, I don't think we can legitimately put a condition into special permit for that. All right, number five, ensure no noise pollution or light pollution on Brittonell. And then that is, the comment was maintain natural aesthetics.
I know there's not gonna be any streetlights.
No, not unless I have something to say about it. I want streetlights, I'm not gonna say it. But noise pollution, I mean, we've got typical build, or we don't have a noise ordinance if I'm not mistaken, in Rufflin at this point.
No noise power law, no.
Okay, so, and light pollution, if there's no streetlights, that's typical what contributes to light pollution.
What if someone wants to put lights up the side of their driveway?
They can, they can do that, I mean, that's-
I'm just saying, I mean, that's-
We can't, we personally, I mean, the board told me wrong, I don't think we can condition individual properties. We're just concerned about the road and the special permit.
I have no intention of putting up any light, any streetlights.
Any comments on number five from the, uh, audience?
Nobody's looking to be heard. One person is not looking to be heard on this matter, on five.
Move on to number six.
No, someone wants to be heard.
I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead from the audience, please.
Uh, Fred Groll has his hand up, if you'd like to speak, please be heard. Uh, if you'd like to be heard, Mr. Groll, please speak.
Yes, thank you, I was on mute accidentally, thanks. Okay, yeah, Kurt Groll, 52, Brittonell. Um, yes, everything you said is true, I think, in the spirit of this concern from, from the residents. The light pollution, you certainly covered with lack of streetlights. I think the noise pollution portion is, you know, it's not a blank statement, meaning that during construction, there's definitely gonna be noise, that's, that's, you know, normal. But this, this noise pollution, I think, was geared towards ensuring that something went in, didn't go in permanently, like some sort of pump maybe related to the sewer system that would create, you know, background noise, it's always there, that's not present today.
Yeah, and, and to Chief Buckley's comment earlier, without a sewer design, we can't really make a comment on if there's gonna be a pump station or something like that there. Without that design, I, I mean, I don't think our board can make any comments on that. Look around, see that I'm not the only one thinking that. That's about as much as I guess we could say on that, because I don't want to condition something-
I don't think there were any proposed pump stations though.
Not that I know of.
It's all gravity, Ron.
Yes.
So what is the concern about the noises?
That if there was a pump station or something, there'd be a humming, you know, noise from a pump station. And, and at least the ones I've been around, I haven't heard any, the one over on Bryce Lemon, and then the one on Bear Hill off of Grizzly, I've been by that multiple times, and I haven't had any noise coming from it that I can discernibly hear.
You'll get noise when the generator kicks on once a day?
That's, that's just a checking, basically.
That's all it is?
Yeah, basically, it's checking the generator, so-
But I don't think there's any noise on, there's no pump station proposed, correct?
Correct, not that I know of at this point, that I saw.
No, no, there won't be.
Okay, if there's no other comments, we'll move on to six. Uh, six is ensure no road closures, blockages on Brittonell Drive between 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM. The concern is there's multiple daycare businesses to remain open during normal business hours, 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM.
It's not a concern.
When am I supposed to work on the houses?
Pardon?
When am I supposed to work on the houses from 4:30 to-
What they're asking for in road closures, is there any intent to have Brittonell closed for construction? You're moving the dirt, yes.
Well, when I'm putting in a sewer line and I have to cross the street, I have to close the road. I mean, there's, there's gonna be times, it should be, that with, as long as the approval of the DPW or the police or whoever normally approve something like that, but there's a, there's a process that you have to follow if you're gonna do that.
Yes, yeah, you're just not gonna close the road off for months, it's gonna be in the time that you need. No, and I'm just, I'm just being extreme. The, any road closures for any sewer water lines put in will be coordinated with town departments.
Yes.
I'm sorry, through the chair.
Yep.
Was the concern, is that in the concern about daycare?
I think the concern is that somebody may not be able to get to the, get to the house to drop their kids off in the morning.
On Brittonell.
I mean, they may need to come in from one side or the other that day.
Yes, because I know there's one, because one of the ladies I worked with at Riley when I was there, she used a daycare center on Brittonell, I know that, but I, I guess all we can do to, to alleviate that is there'll be, if that's gonna happen for this point six, it'll be coordinated through the DPW and the police, if there's gonna be any type of road closure. And typically, at least my experience lately, is the chief's always made that aware either on Facebook or posted, if there's gonna be any type of closures coming up.
And we'd put a time limit, it wouldn't be-
It's to get the construction done in and out.
Yeah, but it would open after the commute.
Yeah, there'd be-
You'd work in between the commutes.
Any questions on six, comments?
Yeah, there's two people in the audience who asked questions or comments on this.
Pick one, Dave, and let's go with that first one, please.
Uh, Joyce Carwick.
Joyce, go ahead.
Yes, hi. So, our house would be kind of impacted especially from the access road, and I'm hoping that this means, I mean, my question would be when that access road is ever gonna be closed, it's always has been my question. But, um, we wouldn't be able to get in or out at all, because we are like right across from the access road where the sewers would be coming down, and then you'd be going down right down towards the, the three big driveways you're gonna make. So, uh, what would, I'm just curious, what would we do in a situation like that? Because what does it take, one day, one night, one, two days? You know, I'm just wondering.
We, we use construction plates. If we leave any trenches open, we always plate them.
So we'll still be able to get in and out?
Of course, we can't, you can't-
Oh, I, I don't know.
You can't trap you in your house, Joyce.
No, I know, but you laugh, but I don't know.
No, I know, I, no, we use construction plates, those big metal plates you see in the road. And if we, if we have to dig in front of your driveway-
I have plenty of roads that have been closed for a year, like trying to go to their, I mean, for whatever reason, um, you know, so you don't know.
I, that, that happens, I'm-
I don't want to speak for the chief, but my personal experience is, they do the construction during the day, and if it's gonna follow over to the next day, they typically put down the road plates to allow traffic to happen after the commute, after the work day, so there's still commuter traffic. And then they pick the work up in the next day. And then, uh, they're using those plates, so you still have access, you're just gonna be driving over plates to protect the work site. I think that happened, chief, at, at Palmigusset and Main Street, when you guys had that leak, it was multiple days and there were plates there while you were working on it, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Believe it or not, we had to wait until after nine o'clock because the doctor don't have traffic.
To the applicant, what are the conditions that you imagine closing Brittonell? What are the, what are the steps of, of the process that you imagine you would close Brittonell?
Well, we're gonna be working on the side of the road, and it's an awful skinny road.
Yep.
So, I mean, you've got a big bad excavator in there, I don't imagine it would be closed, but it would be one way going around it, and there would be a policeman there, just like it would-
Detail.
Yeah, if you were working in a, you know, in a zone where you could only have one row of cars go by at the same time, you know? So I would think that, you know, that, that wouldn't close the road. Anytime it would close, if we had to dig a trench across it, it might be closed for a few minutes until we can get the pipe in, but, you know, we would cover it back up.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, those type of plans would be going through you?
And the, and the chief of police.
And the chief of police, before anything was approved or started.
Right.
Joyce, does that answer or, uh, help you understand the process?
Yes, yes, sure.
Second person, please.
You don't know when that road's gonna be closed.
I, I can't, I, I don't have any idea at that point.
So when you do start putting sewers in, then at that point, it'll be closed?
Um, we, we can't close the road off, no.
The road, no.
No, the access road that you told me doesn't, really isn't a road, two years ago.
I don't know what you're talking about.
That's unrelated to this.
Yeah, that access road.
Well, well, yes and no, yes and no, it impact greatly.
Uh, does someone else want to be heard on this?
Before I say, Joyce, I don't, that access road, I, that's part in the Brittonell Estates, um, design, so I, I don't think from the special permit I can really, the board can comment on when that road will be taken out of service, if it'll ever be taken out of service.
It will, it will be just as soon as we finish Grizzly.
When you, so when you get the second egress, the intent was to take that out of service?
We're gonna actually put, put-
I'll let you work with the chief on that in case he needs it.
But that'll be, that'll remain as an easement, correct?
Correct, yes.
But not open to through traffic?
Not open to through traffic, right.
Utility easement?
Utility easement, that was, so Joyce, does that help answer your question that at some point-
Well, yeah, that's, that's the promise, you know, that was made a couple, I mean, that's been in the past.
About a decade ago.
And two years ago.
Yeah.
Well, you're waiting, so now you're putting in, um, those other, you're putting, doing the road, Bear Hill down there?
It's Brittonell Estates will actually be the, that'll be the extension where that road will come out onto Brittonell, and that'll be the second egress out of that subdivision.
Yes, and at that point, I own ideas on that, but anyway, at that point-
That's another hearing you can come to.
Huh?
That's a, that's a, um, another discussion you can bring forward.
Another hearing, yeah. Um, traffic, you know, but, um, well, being right across from that supposed access road that on Google Maps says Grizzly Drive, um-
Google Maps can be wrong, they are wrong plenty.
Yeah.
Well, I know they are, but I pointed out the fact that it's supposed to be an access road, but it's an access road for everyone.
Correct, right now it is, it's an access road for Bear Hill subdivision off of Grizzly. Until the second egress is put in, so.
But not only for them, for everybody else in town that likes to cut through.
Yes, yep, I agree, I know it, so, Dave, number two, still hand up?
Uh, yes, um, this is-
Yeah, hi, I'm, hi, Melissa Brown, 56, Brittonell. Um, I guess I just wanted to put it out there, because I'm one of the home daycare providers, and I live right next to the access road being discussed. And I guess I was just nervous, like, because I don't know how this works, but that with the big sewer line going in on, through the access road and then down in front of my house, how it would impact parents being able to drop off their kids and pick them up from my house. So I just, I guess you kind of spoke to it when Joyce, um, was speaking about, I, I didn't know how long it would be closed, if it's going to be like days upon days, or if it's going to be a whole day, I just, and I'm curious about how much notice I'll have so I can tell parents, because that will greatly affect my business.
Chief Buckley's gonna give a comment, go ahead, chief.
So typically, we don't, when they say close the road, they, they close it for six or seven hours during the middle of the day. So the intent would be that, so the, the road would get closed at nine o'clock, to through traffic, we'd still get local traffic in and out, and then reopen at, say, three o'clock in the afternoon, just so that they could do the construction in the safest manner possible, not exposing the public to it. So when they say close the road, they'll close it in the middle of the day for probably a week or two weeks at a time, but it's not like it'll be closed at night and it won't be closed during the commute. I hope that answers your question.
That does, I appreciate it, I just, one thing is like if a parent needs to pick up for a doctor's appointment or for whatever it is, are they going to-
That's local traffic, and the contractor will be responsible for finding a way.
Okay, so they'll be able to obviously, okay. Um, I guess that's, I, I mean, not that they would get stuck here, I would have to find some way, but I, I just wanted to make sure that that was gonna be considered in that, because, yeah, that was my biggest concern, I guess, so thank you.
I, I don't think, um, number six, the board can tell me wrong, I don't see any conditions for that other than standard building conditions that we have, so. Let's move on to number seven, we're getting to the end. Ensure Brittonell Drive road dust mitigation steps in place to minimize particulate matter and air to EPA standards per DPW guidance. And then the reason was, preserve healthy breathing conditions for residents, especially young children in daycare homes that are outside for long periods of time. Uh, I'll take anything from the board, I, I mean, there's construction all the time.
And weather like we've had, we don't have to worry.
Yeah, the, the rain will keep the dust down.
But, well, let's also be clear, Brittonell, driving on Brittonell generates dust, and that can't be prevented, and that can't be conditioned-
No.
Because it's a, it's the nature and the status of the road.
Go ahead, chief.
Separate distinct. Um, DPW's trying to come up with a process to start treating those roads environmentally to manage the dust.
Okay.
Um, gravel roads can lose as much as two, two inches of gravel a year due to dust. Um, I think in the memo I sent, I referenced that the contractor would have to do some spraying and manage the dust throughout the project.
Okay, Clee, understood?
Understood.
Okay, and-
Now, what could be reasonably conditioned is, uh, dust controls when removing material from the site, or even I suppose bringing it on, but that doesn't make as much sense. Having dust controls when you're removing from the site entering Brittonell, like any other project, could reasonably be expected to do, I would think.
I imagine the contractor would spray the road regularly anyways, because it minimizes the amount of repair work he has to do in the long run.
Anybody on the board see, uh, condition for that, or is that, to me, that's just construction practices?
I think that's construction practices.
I think so.
Okay. Dave, is there anybody, I'm letting you write, I'm sorry, I'm having, I interrupted you while you were writing. Is there anybody, uh, comments, Republican?
Yes, we want to be heard on this matter.
Go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, a quick, 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 Andrew Brandt, 30, Brittonell Drive. Um, just pushing back a little bit on Peter's comment, because that was a special permit review criteria. Um, it does again talk about the project will not cause a nuisance such as dust. And yes, that is true, that, um, normal cars driving creates dust. But we're trying to have the foresight and thinking about, not that it's raining today in July, but what happens two years from now when we're in a drought, we're moving, I mean, it's our understanding that this applicant is going to be moving a lot of fill from these properties, that's going to mean a lot of trucks coming in and out of Brittonell Drive, um, which could create an excessive amount of dust. So that's, again, we're just trying to have the foresight, um, it's in the review criteria. Um, we think it should be addressed, and glad Buckley meant, uh, Chief Buckley mentioned that they're potentially have a longer term solution, but I, I would be remiss to say that, you know, well, of course, it's, it's dirt and that's just gonna happen. Well, it's gonna happen potentially even more problematic, given the fact that we're running so much construction vehicles. So we wanted to at least bring it to your attention, have a little more foresight here on this, and, um, we, we do think there should be a plan in place, um, to help mitigate as much as possible.
Chief?
Good, um, I asked Mr. George Cherebo, I put in the conditions on the road, I can't remember, I wrote it out. Um, tell me if this sounds about right, so I believe it's item four. There is some wisdom in applying dust control for the start of the project. Gravel roads can lose significant amounts of material through the dust, as much as a couple of inches a year.
as much as a couple of inches a year, the construction process, process will make this happen quicker. Is that what you're looking for?
I did, yes, did.
So, to convert that into a condition, you would offer?
Regular spray.
Regular spray.
Throughout the process.
So, after we're done with these nine, the next step I was gonna do is bring up what, uh, Chief Buckley had recommended for some conditions, and they might apply to the few of these discussions that we're having right now, so. I would ask that you give us, just, let's get through these nine, and then Dave, I'll have you bring that letter up and, uh, as potential conditions, that'll be added on to the special permit.
So, no one else has any interest on this item, number seven?
All right, we'll move on to number eight. Ensure no loud noise producing equipment operated before 7:00 AM, and the reason was early morning disturbance of peace.
I think that's the rule anyway.
Okay.
Can't stop before seven, Richard, yeah.
That, hopefully that answers the question that, uh, there'll be no construction before 7:00 AM on these properties per, is that, Chief, is that a town rule, or is that?
No, we don't have anything.
We don't have anything.
There's, 'cause I know there's no nor, noise ordinance by law.
It's mine, it's through the chair, it's my understanding, we don't have anything related to a timeframe for that.
Correct, that's what I was getting at, so.
Do the building permits have anything on?
Planning board always, you guys always stick that up.
I mean, we, you know, I guess, Tameka, Dave, will put that in as a condition, no construction before 7:00 AM, if the board's okay with that.
And later than.
Kinda.
Pick it in touch.
This is, only has to do with equipment, right?
Equipment, I was, well, yeah, I was. Oh, I don't know, if you got that pneumatic thing out there, I'm thinking, no, honestly, Cle, I, I think this was, it said, I would say equipment, and I'll ask for, I'll ask for comments from the audience, but I would say large construction equipment.
'Cause a lot of times the, the sub start at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, especially on the hot days, you try to get it in before the sun.
Roofing guys don't want to be on a roof at, uh.
Right, so, I mean, I, I mean, I would say, you know, for that, it would probably.
Large equipment.
I, I just.
Anybody else on the board, comments on that? I mean, that's, to me, a fair condition, so. No large equip, no large construction equipment before 7:00 AM.
We, we know that's the rule anyway.
Which means no trucks or large trucks or anything coming like there before 7 o'clock, or excavating equipment, okay? So, Dave?
Means to keep the buses off also.
I can't say anything, no comment.
And it's not a construction equipment.
Yeah, Dave, is there anybody, yeah, anybody from the audience, comments?
Yeah, exactly, instructing young minds.
That's right. All right, we'll go to the last one, ensure no trees are cut down that are in the mid, that are, that are or might be in public right of way on Brittonell Drive until the planning board can review, and then the, uh, reason is maintain natural aesthetics and adhere to Rutland Scenic Bylaw. I, I think that's, that is part of the special permit is, we can put in there as a condition, adhere to, it's scenic by law, if that's.
We have to anyway.
Yeah, you have to, I know, to me, there's no need for the condition for that, because, I remember the scenic by law, three trees can be cut down and have to go to the tree warden, pass three trees, you have to come before the planning board with the tr, with the tree warden to, uh, have an application, so, I, I think that takes care of number nine. Go ahead.
What if we, uh, put in a, a general condition that these scenic bylaws have to be followed, recognized?
I'm fine with it, it's belt suspenders, I'm good with that, anybody else on the board?
Issue?
Yeah. Through the chair.
Go ahead.
It's my understanding that tree hearings come through the select board.
Nope.
No.
Not, not for the scenic bylaw.
Not for the scenic bylaw.
Scenic bylaw, the, the tree warden is in charge of it, but because he doesn't have a board, he, uh, the planning board facilitates a tree warden hearing.
Got it.
For a scenic road.
For a scenic road, correct.
I think a general comment to the, uh, the group of people that we've been talking to, that I was, uh, really impressed with the, uh, material that you gave us and expressing your views, and I also want to assure you that we take them seriously, even if we say it's not our, you know, not our purview, so, you know, I think you made good points, and thank you.
Was there any specific on that last one on the trees, um, and they can speak up to this, was there any, in the design that Mr. Blair's provided, any specific areas that are of concern for them?
Can, Dave, is there anybody's hands up?
I don't know if anybody has their hands up, and is looking to speak.
You know, is there a beech tree that's got 20 generations of initials, or, you know what I mean, I'm just curious, is there something that? Right, you know, but I'm just curious, if there's not, then I think you're just gonna follow what's already in our bylaws.
The preliminary layout doesn't show a lot of tree cutting along the right of way.
Okay.
Does it?
Someone wants to be heard on this.
Okay, go ahead, public.
Ask them mute, Fred Roll.
Fred, please, uh, speak up.
Darn, mute again, sorry, um, just to answer that question about any particular trees, I think what, um, what I heard when we discussed this as a group, the main concern was a little number of large pine trees that are, let's see, uh, to the east of Joyce, Joyce's house, um, and, uh, I'm trying to recall exactly where, but, um, across the street from the Woolbridge's, Woolbridge's house, uh, in that area. Now, I don't know personally if they're in the right of way or not, um, but those were the ones that were particularly exciting. And, and I don't know if they would be, you know, in the area that, that would need to be cut either, it was just a, a general concern that was brought up.
Okay, well, again, that's, that would fall in the purview of the tree warden, and then if there are more than three, that would have to be brought with the tree warden to the planning board for approval, before they could be taken down. I don't know if that answers your question or gives you information, but that's, that's how the scenic bylaws set up right now.
Right, yep. Thanks.
And Mr. Blair's aware of that, right?
Yep. And one more person on this?
Okay, go ahead.
Ask them mute.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yep.
Okay, um, I just wanted to say, I, um, to Dave, George, I sent you a chat question, it's a little bit of outside of what this list is, but I just want to make sure you got it.
I think, I think for the purposes of this open meeting, you're gonna have to recite your comment that you made here, otherwise, let, let's make it a public comment, so whatever you had to say, please, please recite it, please.
Okay, my question is, um, and I, I don't know if now, but, uh, or when. Um, how and when could we propose, number one, that there only be a right-hand turn out of Bear Hill Road, not only when construction begins, but also permanently when houses go in there? Because if it's connected to the rest of the neighborhood and they need to get to the center of town, they have a way to get there. Um, and also to get posted, posted speed limits on Brittonell Drive, white signs that have posted speed limits of 20 miles per hour. I mean, several years ago, we had, uh, suggested the yellow signs, and it's, I don't even know if they're up anymore, but, um, I think it needs to be posted.
The access road, you can't, Chief, I, I don't think, I'll let you speak, the access road, only a right-hand turn out of the access road. It brings you north, or?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
Out of, well, the access road of, as, as you have said, is going to be closed, I'm talking about down where Bear Hill Drive, where they're, they're starting to clear it up for a road.
Oh, Grizzly, yeah.
Grizzly, yeah.
That's Grizzly, it'll be Grizzly.
It'll be Grizzly, okay, I think it's fair to ask that there be only a right turn only out of there, because I think it would discourage people from coming down Brittonell, instead, they'd go through the neighborhood, their neighborhood, to get to the center of town, or to 56.
I don't know, Chief, I'll let you answer that.
That's traffic on Brittonell Drive, would help with the traffic situation.
And it has to be one way all the time, doesn't it?
So.
I can't envision what she's asking. No, what she's asking is that for, when you come out of Grizzly, it would be a, a right-hand turn only to go up to Campbell Street, is that it, Joyce? And not, left-hand, that's where you're getting that, I thought that's what you were doing, you're asking for that.
Yes, so.
So, let's start with the signs first.
Okay, let's go to the signs.
Any signs on an existing public right of way, if a citizen requests a sign, an additional stop sign, um, a speed limit sign, some, or slow down for, you know, recreational area, that kind of thing, there's a form you fill out, I review it for
Okay.
technical stuff, the police chief reviews it, um, believe it or not, the chief has a listing of all the speed limits. We can't just post it 20 miles an hour, it, it, the chief will have a list for that.
Oh, sure, I understand that, I understand.
Been reviewed and I agree with it, the chief agrees with it, and I think the fire chief also may look at that.
That's right.
Then it goes to the select board and it's discussed on the floor, um, and you could come in and comment about it at that time. I think that's probably the best way to go about it, um, and I don't think, um, I'd go with a right turn only as a condition for this, because planning board would probably have to contact their engineer and consider like a traffic study, and I don't think that's warranted.
But that would be on Brittonell, we couldn't, it wouldn't be here, that's not part of this. Yeah.
Right, I, I, I think it all belongs to the signed form.
Yeah.
I think that's the best way to go.
Okay, that was my question.
Great, anybody else, Dave? All right, let's, what I wanted to bring up next was, uh, Chief Buckley had, had brought a, items that, uh, were potential to be used as conditions on this, uh, estate lot. Kind of a brain death, uh, state lot, uh, special permit. So, um, if the board's okay, I guess I was gonna run through these and, and get comments from us, and then get comments from the public. Is that okay? Everybody good with that?
Okay with that, yep.
All right, the first item was, uh, the chief had recommended Blair Homes developer or the subcontractor, limit the use of Brittonell to, and then to and from the site upon, of, I don't know, to and to and from the site to Palma Gussit. So, what we're basically saying, this would be, construction traffic would come in from Palma Gussit, not from Campbell Street. Is my?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Limit it to one way.
So, I'm gonna ask the board, I'm okay with that, um, anybody on the board comments, Dave?
Uh, nobody is looking to be heard on this item number one here.
Anybody, you good with that?
You're afraid to remind me?
Mm-hmm.
The guys.
Yeah, you good?
I'm happy to do it, I just won't forget.
So, the logic behind that is simple, um, don't beat up the entire road, give folks a way in and out from the opposite side, so when we go to do repairs, it's finite, not repairing the entire road.
Okay, Cle, I gotta ask you, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, anybody from the public have comment on this first item?
Yeah, someone has their hand up.
Jeff, Andrew Brandt, 38, Brittonell Drive, appreciate that, uh, Chief Buckley, um, I do have concern, and I know they're gonna be starting that Palma Gussit project at some point, so I don't know how practical that's going to be for this applicant to do that, and potentially at certain points down the road. If that is the case, we should be, whatever is being proposed from Palma Gussit to, I guess, where the end of the, the closest, um, or the nearest house.
Oh, at the center of town, that, uh.
It's not.
Well, it's Palma Gussit goes under reconstruction.
Palma Gussit's gonna go under, under reconstruction, the tip project starts.
Yes.
It's proposed to start in October of 22, um, 100% design plans are done, and basically, the area that'll be torn up is the, is from Main Street to the big subdivisions.
Yeah.
Brunel East and Brunel West.
Those roads, up until the end of that road, the rest of Palma Gussit's not in that construction.
Right, which includes this intersection.
Yes.
We all think that's gonna be a factor, um, in all, in, in this.
That would be a, that would be the contractor's concern, um, if he, if it's gonna, he, he could, if he thinks it's gonna hamper his operation, he could apply to update that or change that at that time, um, we're just trying to limit the damage to the road or keep it finite.
Okay, I just want us to be aware of that then, because that might hold to different standards at different parts of the road then, if we're not going to, again, I'm trying to, I'm looking ahead to maybe number five is where you're going with that, but, um, if that's gonna be the case, then we should definitely revisit that and see what needs to be done on the other parts of the road, if that's the case.
I, uh, okay.
So, what he's trying to, I believe.
I'm struggling with this, yeah.
Well, what he's suggesting is, if for whatever reason, due to the heavy construction on Palma Gussit, the contractor at some point decides, or Mr. Blair's firm decides that it's not prudent for them to come in from Palma Gussit, and they have to use the Campbell side, we'd have to rework some of these things, and that's basically, we'd have to make those adjustments, and I get.
Correct, 'cause the order of conditions would have this, and if, and if you were unable to do that because of that, you'd come back to the planning board and go, "Board, I can't get my construction equipment in, can I get, come up with an alternate?" And then we would have this, we would have that condition discussed, and if we have to amend it, we have to. I believe, did I get that right?
That's correct, yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm fine with that, but I, I was gonna have this as, uh, number one, is another order of condition on the special permit. Is the board okay with that?
I agree.
Okay, let's move on to number two. Blair Homes should close Brittonell to through traffic when hauling material from north side, north, northern site to southern site. I would suggest you reach out to the chief of police, but I believe 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM is a good working range, and I think we already covered that when we were talking about the points of, we were basically looking for oper, or can, I use the word operations, but that's a boiler term, um, when you're doing your day of business is between 9:00 and 3:00 AM.
3:00 PM.
3:00 PM, yeah, AM, I was gonna give you, I was gonna give you a lot more time to work. If that's amenable, I would have this basically reference to what the condition we had earlier for the.
If I may, that, this condition is not a, a planning board condition, this is an earthworks condition for the earth movement, for the, for the earth removal permit.
The road is?
Well, oh, that's true, I, well, actually, we can, we, we will permit, we will condition the hours of operation.
Okay, I, unless the board's objectable, I don't mind putting it in our conditions, just belt suspenders, I guess, is what I'm looking at.
We're, we're talking about number two?
Yes, number two. 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
All right, okay.
Now, when we met in the field, you proposed using good-sized vehicles for hauling material, and that road is narrow.
Right.
So, that's why, where that comes from.
Yes, and absolutely, and I, and I, we would, I would suggest the same thing, just to through traffic, you put a, one on one end and one on the other end, and if it takes, you know, a time of whatever it is, we do it between those times and that's it, and I, I'm 100% agreed, 100%.
That's why I was putting in a special permit, 'cause it pertains to the construction of the site.
Right.
That's why, and, and Peter, if you guys, if we're, I have part of norms on there too, if the earthworks board has something else, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we cover it under our special permit for the construction of the sites, and if the board's okay with that, I'd like to add that as a special permit condition, okay?
Can I bring this up at this meeting, or should we take it after the meeting?
Let me just, let me grab, see if there's anybody from the public, and then Cle, I'll get your comments, anybody on number two from the public comment?
Nobody?
All right, go ahead, Cle.
So, the earth removal board, if I have a building permit, just if I just pull a building permit, do I need to go through the earth removal?
Yes, you do.
Why?
'Cause the bylaw says so.
To move dirt, to remove dirt if you have a building permit?
Yeah, everything, everything except, oh, I know that, but let's not get into that right now. Uh, what I will say is the bylaw specifically exempts foundation and driveway and certain pertinent structures. Other, other than that, any other earth movement is supposed to require an earth removal.
I would be building the driveway, though.
Right, but you're not gonna touch anything else on the property, any other dirt on the property?
Yeah, we'd have to grade it, so you'd have to grade out, but that's still building the driveway, though. Uh, that's why I said we shouldn't probably bring it up here.
Yeah, yeah.
If I need to file for a permit with you guys, I will.
Yeah.
Okay, good enough, let's go on to number three. Develop what should regularly maintain the gravel road from Palma Gussit to the site during the project. This includes simple filling of potholes with gravel, applying environmentally friendly dust control, which we talked about earlier, every two to three weeks as needed. Any comment from the board before I open it up? Yes, no, you say no?
I say no comment.
Okay, I thought you said no to it, like. Marilyn, do you have any?
No comment.
Kevin? All right, I'll open it up to the audience here, Cle, Chief Buckley, any comments? Peter? All right?
I guess nothing, no.
All right, let's move on to number four.
Can I?
Go ahead.
One quick, that's during, uh, during active construction, if they're not working.
So, number four, we should can, add condition as during active construction?
Right.
I'm okay with that, we could add that in for number four for the condition.
'Cause if you, if you have bad weather and you stall, the job stalls for three, four, five months at a time, they're not gonna be responsible for the road, that would fall in public works.
I'm good with that, so change, add that in as active construction, perfect.
You all right with that?
Yeah.
All right. What I'm suggesting, just so you know, is have some, one of your, uh, one of the staff, labor, truck driver, just check for potholes, 'cause the construction equipment's tough on gravel roads, so if you see something, just fill it in, it'll probably, it, it goes a long way.
Absolutely, yep, 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 and my guys are good like that, they will, they will.
Number five, a simple calculation, 300 feet from Brittonell.
3,000.
3,000, thanks. Three thousand. Thanks, I just, rounding. Three thousand feet within Britenell from Palma Gussit to proposed site. A fifteen-foot roadway and four inches of gravel applied, spread and rolled to, rolled is fifty-five, five hundred and fifty-five, man, long night, cubic yards. Not every, not everywhere we will need it, so five hundred and fifty cubic yards is a fair number. Replacement of the gravel surface has to happen at, at the very end of work, and is why the simple maintenance is key to the, to both the developer and the town. I would ask the planning board to have the developer sped and roll the gravel fifty-five cubic, five hundred and fifty cubic yards at the end of described site work. We are simply asking to, asking them to restore the roadway. So basically, Cle, when you're done building there, can you put in that five hundred and fifty cubic yards of gravel from Palma Gussit up through Britenell to the end of where your, where your site work is?
So, is it, do you want ABC, or do you want gravel?
Gravel.
Really? It doesn't set as high.
That's fine. Put gravel back, because that's the existing condition.
Okay. It's, ABC's better.
We'll get to ABC. I know it's better.
Okay. All right, that's, I just don't know which, what the cost is. I know what gravel costs, but I don't know what ABC, I think it's cheaper than gravel, isn't it?
Might be.
And it rolls in there like, I.
I'm gonna ask him if he's okay with that. Cle, are you okay with that? Because we were gonna put that into condition as part of the special permit.
You know, it's hard to put a number on it. It might be more than that, it might be less than that. I just, what Joe's saying is, look, if you wreck the road, fix it, and I, and I agree. So if, if you feel we're gonna take
All I did was I took a map and that's what I came up with.
Yeah, I mean, I.
They asked me for a number, that's the number I got.
Yeah, because right now it's dirt, and what we're basically saying is from Palma Gussit to end of site, put some gravel down, and five hundred and fifty cubic yards was the number at the end of the work is what we came up with.
Do we need to be that specific, or can we just say return it?
I, I'll, I'll.
Well, returning it to the gravel now, or it's, it's dirt, so we were asking with gravel as an improvement, basically.
First of all, I, I agree with that, you know, I mean gravel's about twenty-one bucks a yard. So, five hundred and fifty yards shouldn't be, you know, eleven grand, twelve grand, that's not the end of the world, and I have, you want to hit it with the vibratory roller?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I mean, we'll hit it with the roller and.
If you're okay with that, we're just gonna put that in the special.
I would say to the sad, and I put myself in it, because this, this kind of puts me on a number that I can, I can live with, but it should say to the satisfaction of the DPW director.
I'm fine with that.
It should say that. I mean, I, you know, like I said.
Dave, can you make sure that gets added in? I appreciate it, thanks.
Or, we could also, that. We could modify the spec on the gravel, subject to the approval of the.
DPW chief?
Yep.
Okay.
The material's subject to the approval of the DPW.
And if the board's okay with this, some of these, these conditions that involve the chief, I'd like those to him to review them before we vote on anything, if that's okay with the board.
I'm working on that spec, but it's.
So last, is there any comment from the public?
Yes, there is.
All right.
Andrew Brandt, thirty-eight Brittenell Drive. So this, number five, very important part, I think it's a little vague. Replacement of the gravel surface has to happen at the very end of the work. What are we referring to in that line? Because he's got ten houses. He only constructs eight. Technically, he's not done, never sells those, doesn't build them five, six years out. So just help me out, understand a little bit more about when does that restoration happen with the road, because again, at the very end of the work, I'm not quite, I'm not following what that entails. I can see that being open to interpretation, and when the road actually might get restored.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
And we don't, I don't know, there's no time constraints in.
Well, Cle, we could say two years, because that's when the special permit runs out, at the end of two years.
Unless the permit is extended.
Unless it's extended.
By the question of the prior expiration of the special permit.
Correct.
But.
This is a tough one.
I, I can say, you could say that it should be, that every two years, the DPW can, the DPW director can, can ask to do X, Y, and Z at that time. You know what I mean? I mean, because let's say after two years, I've built five of them, right? So it's probably gonna, it, it, it's not gonna see as much bang up as, as it would, you know.
Well, we've got it earlier, that you have to basically keep the road in a, in, in the condition it was during, you know, as you're doing construction, so if there are any major potholes, you'll be refilling those anyhow.
I'll, I'll, I'll do it at the discretion of the DPW director. Whenever he says to do it, I'll do it.
Should we put that in there?
Rather than put it at the end, he'd just put at the discretion of the DPW director.
So, or, you'd have to make a note to, to bring me back to the table at the time he renews his special permit though.
Okay.
And I'd have to make that evaluation then. I mean, two years is reasonable. And we can see where we're at at that point and make a decision, but I'd, I'd rather be involved in that, make that decision at that time.
Looking for any board help, because I'm not sure how to update this wording, other than to.
After the, after the, after the sewer is done, Mr. Blair, after that's done on the road. Or for anybody, I mean, that, is that the majority of, no. You can say this, say there's five houses, and all the sewer lines along the road are all done and in place.
Driving the trucks on the road is what's, is what's going to cause.
Yeah, the sixteen-wheelers and stuff is what, what destroys Palma Gus, or I'm sorry, destroys Britenell. Palma Gus is already.
Nope, already in slope. So one of the, by means of example, one of those loaded ten-wheelers is one run, run over Brittenell with one of those, is the equivalent to like, I don't know, two hundred Toyotas. That gives you an idea.
I guess I'm looking for some words. Do we, do we, after two years, do a review, and if, if Mr. Blair gets all the houses done in two years, then it's a moot point, but if there's gonna be a potential extension of the special permit, then we should review at that point on the site work required for Britenell.
The resident's concern is valid. There has to be some.
End point?
End point, exactly.
Yeah.
You know, my point, it's, you know, these are Band-Aids, right? So, you know, there's long-term concerns regarding that road. It's been cited in previous meeting minutes from the prior DPW director, who's saying that this road can't even sustain this traffic. And he had a lot of different thoughts as it relates to this proposed developments back in eighteen, of installing drainage, pavement came up and so forth. So I mean, I, I, you know, I think this is great, Joe. I think definitely you're kind of aligned of how the residents are feeling, but again, this is just, these are Band-Aids. And I'm afraid that we're, and again, maybe this isn't really the applicant's problem, right? We're approving these houses effectively from the town issue, long-term. The road cannot sustain these developments. Brittenell Drive, these ten developments, there's gotta be some other conversation. This is not the way to go about it. I really don't think so. I think the town's gonna, you know, you guys are, DPW, the override didn't pass. Continue decrease in your manpower, Joe. I, I feel bad. It's just how are we gonna maintain this road? Again, not necessarily the applicant's problem. It's gonna be ours if we approve this, but we haven't even discussed Brittenell Drive, and I'm kinda surprised on that one too. That's thirty-five plus homes that are pretty much gonna be traveling down this road. If you look at where the road is, they're not gonna be cutting through the subdivision to get through town, so I, I, this is great in spirit, but I feel like these are Band-Aids that we're putting in place here, and we need to really be thinking about how are we gonna substantially improve the infrastructure due to these cars?
Yeah, but I guess from the board's concern, we were just trying to make sure that we handled as best as possible this special permit and the houses that were going in, in this case. I, I hear what you're saying with Britenell. I live across from it, and our, our planning board chairman lives on it, so I mean, we're, we're aware of what's going on, but I, I think that this was an opportunity to help Britenell Road up until the end of this, this construction, at least. You're right, it's a Band-Aid, I get it. I just think it's something that we should put in place as part of this development.
I would just say to Tim's point, the intent of number five is to improve the existing condition of the road. And Mr. Blair's willing to improve the existing condition of the road. You know, five years, ten years from now.
Is it actually to, to improve, or is it merely to effectively repair anything that's happened?
Effectively repair.
That's what I thought. So let's, let's get the intent.
Okay, right, I mean, but if it's, if it's mud and dirt now, and he's putting down gravel, I would look at that as an improvement, maybe it shouldn't be listed as a.
Yeah, that's.
He has to improve it, but I look at it as a.
Yeah, maybe I should use the word enhance is maybe a better word, because.
And I think maybe in the future, people ought to probably get together and start discussing, do you want a gravel road, or do you want something else on there to try to maintain it better?
I'm gonna look to the chief for his comment.
The town isn't gonna come to that conclusion on their own.
Yeah.
That, the residents will have to get together and petition the board, and, and the town collectively will have to levy or develop the funds to do the work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
Unfortunately. It doesn't fall, making that decision doesn't currently fall the public works. We have to maintain the gravel road as it is currently. If for whatever reason that everyone who lives there got together and decided that they wanted, it would be a petition process, and there'd be betterments involved, and there, I mean, it can be done, but I don't think the town would ever just jump and do it on its own.
It hasn't in the twenty-one years I've been here.
And I, I think you're right about Band-Aids, you know, that that's exactly what we do, but that's also, our job as the planning board is, it really boils down to short-range planning and not long-range, you know, effects of cumulative development.
Yeah, we don't have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just worried about the hazard conditions that occur, and, you know, Joe, we're gonna be adding, I don't know, you could say a hundred cars on this road, given, you know, thirty-five of Brittenell, two cars a house, ten years, twelve, I mean, and maybe all, all the other services. That's kinda scary, and again, I just keep seeing the, the, the services getting slashed. I just don't, I don't know how we're gonna maintain it. Again, we would look, we would look for an expert, obviously, for the town, to understand, well, if we did want to improve it correctly, what would that take and what would that look like?
But I think that's not the discussion for this board, even though I agree with what you're saying. You know, we just, we look at projects, we don't look at the, you know, the effect, as, as you're saying, of Brittenell and, you know, other developments that are planned on the road.
I think to get this back, Marilyn, to your point, is we, we need to come up with an end date and a way to word this to, so it, it's not forever. It's got an end date, and I'm looking for any help. Do we do two years? At the special permit, or do we do it two years and with the discretion of the DPW chief? I'm looking for something that we can put our teeth into for a condition.
I, I think the discretion of the DPW chief needs, needs to be included there.
And at the close of the, sorry to interrupt you, I think at the close of the, when you go to do the re.
The recertification of the permit, correct?
I gotta do the old-school thing and walk the job.
Right.
So.
Hopefully it won't be.
Board okay with that?
Two years.
Two years?
Yeah, two years.
Okay. And include there, with the discretion of the DPW chief involved in that process.
Unrelated, the town did take a pretty good jump forward with pavement management recently.
Yes.
We got a grant.
Three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
No, that's different.
Well, that's a sidewalk, sorry.
That's a sidewalk.
Yeah.
No, the grant was, I wanna say for thirty-five thousand, and it's a community compact grant, and we did a request for proposals. I think we've selected STANTEC engineers.
Good company.
Um, they're gonna come through and evaluate all paved roads in town, establish an index and, and write away information and the like, and help us come up with the best way to spend what little money we do.
And your chapter ninety money, correct?
Yes.
That, that covers that too, okay. Dave, any more comments from the public?
My point is, though, what you'll get out of it is a means to go forward.
Correct, for the town.
And it's, the intent, believe it or not, is to de-politicize it. Where's the best way to spend your money going forward?
Instead of picking and choosing roads.
In an organized fashion.
Nobody else on this one.
All right, let's go to, I think, this might be added into the timeframe. Number six is timing. This road cannot really be used for the purpose from November to May. If we have an open winter and there, and there is out of a frost maybe, but written approval comes from the DPW, so.
So which purpose?
Construction is what I'm gathering from.
Is it construction or the earth movement specific? I'm trying to understand.
Either one's fine.
You're saying I can't build houses between November and.
No, I'm saying, well.
Or build road. Like, in other words, these are just houses, they're just lots.
Our jurisdiction is what's on the road.
I think, I think what we're talking about is actually on the road, which is.
The earth moving.
Yes.
The big stuff.
Oh, I'm not gonna, that, that, that's gonna be done, you know, probably another month from now. It'll be done. I won't need anymore.
And then also, I'm guessing, chief, you were talking about any sewer and water being put in between May and November. That's usually not a good time when you've got frost.
I don't intend to be taking into.
Okay. No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think that was the intent.
Now, you did a lot up on, at the intersection by Palma Gussit. And it, we got a flash melt, and we had a lot of melt, and that road got really mucky.
Yes.
That's what I need to avoid.
Right, right, right.
Okay?
Yep, 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 yep. I see what you're saying.
So if we put a condition in, no large earthworks or sewer and water construction between November and May, is that acceptable?
Well, but the last sentence there, but, with written approval would need. So if I get written approval.
You get an email from me, you can do it. And what I'm looking for, to be honest with you, is five or six inches of frost or something like that, something that, as long as it's stable or it's been really dry.
Dick, you had a comment?
I feel a salt about our jurisdiction.
Chief, is that, is that, you think?
I feel like it coincides with the same, maintaining the road during, you know, the entire process, you're gonna basically just be making sure that, you know, there aren't gonna be big potholes, there aren't gonna be big issues. If we have a big thaw, you're gonna be aware of it, and if there's a big mud pit in the middle of the road, you're gonna, you're gonna take care of it.
Just some basic common sense.
Yeah, Dick, the, the reason I like it is because that last part of the sentence, you can do it, but you need written approval from the DPW chief. So we're saying.
So why is it in our woods?
Why?
Because it's part of the special permit for, because of those, the construction of the sewer that's gonna be taking place in a public road, and any earthworks movable that'll be removed and onto public roads. I know, but I, but the construction is on our special permitted areas. Tell me if wrong, Marilyn, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud.
I'm, I was just thinking that, I don't remember ever doing this before.
Correct. We've never had a special permit like this before either.
Have you done a special permit on a gravel scenic road?
Yeah, we've never done this before.
All right. What about Glouwood Place? What's that? Was that?
That's a.
You guys did, I had, it made me put a lot of gravel down on Glouwood Place that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's not a scenic road.
Yeah, so I, I see what you're saying, Dick, but I, I guess, to me, this is like belt and suspenders. We're, we're putting it in here, but ultimately, the chief's gonna make the call if anything wants to be done between November and May, so it's not really our jurisdiction. We're just putting it in there to remind the applicant that this has to be, any work that wants to be done outside of, or inside of May, November to May, has to get written approval from the DPW chief.
Now, look, it, by means of example, if he has to do fifty more feet, and he'll go into December, but he'll finish all the sewer work, and it's, we don't have any snow on the ground, I'd, I'd probably let it go. But you just have to have some.
Belt and suspenders is the way I look at it. That's, that's the only reason.
Do you understand?
Hmm? I'm fine with that. I have no problem with that, because you're, you're a reasonable person, you'll know.
I know you don't want extra stuff.
I have no problem with that. Plus, I can always come from the.
I see. Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Just complete subdivision.
You don't want extra stuff.
That's common sense, something that he should be able to adjust and solve between him and, and DPW.
Chief, you?
It's cool.
That should be between the two of them and not, and not on us on a scenic road.
Because it's a scenic.
Because it's a scenic road, you think we should not? It's because, to me, for crying out loud, it's between the two on sewer, but it's the trees and the stone wall is what we are up against.
Chief, do you have a problem if we just leave this in your bailiwick and don't put it in our orders of condition? The last one, number six. The last one, number six.
All right. It, it's fine.
Here, here's the problem, I mean, and again, putting myself in the, in the gun. If it's not on there, then, you know, this, uh, everybody's gonna forget. I mean, I, I don't mind you putting on there as long as it's with his approval. And I'm not trying to put myself in a, in a, in a, in a box, but it's not, if you don't put it on there, it doesn't give him any power.
And if the applicant's okay with it?
I, I'm just, I'm just trying to make it so that.
Is that your?
Joe's.
Joe's.
Just don't wanna make a precedent, that's all. We'll let Peter come up with a new bylaw for the DPW.
Don't even go, no, I don't.
Is it acceptable to have a mutually agreeable condition placed on this?
I think it's a mutually agreeable condition. I don't say, I just don't see the negative of it.
We got two, two, and I wanna break this tie, and there's no tiebreaker here. So I wanna, if Marilyn and Dick say, still say no, I, I don't know.
I don't, I mean, it can go in there. I'm just, I'm just not happy about it, that's all.
I'm okay with it since, if Cleese is okay with it.
I, I just wanna make sure that I'm, I'm, I have to call him and I'm, and there'll be a point where I, you know, maybe, maybe there's another way to word it. Just, you know, work between November and May should be approved by the DPW director.
I'm fine with that.
Put that in there and, you know, um, because it, it does, I, I see Joe's point. We, that beginning of the road there, it, it got so mucked up at the beginning of the season, it, it just made.
Dick, does that matter?
I closed the other end.
If we do that, okay, let's go with that as a.
I remember that.
I closed it in April, up by Warren's House. That, that actually happened. I remember doing that.
Cause it was so muddy that nobody could pass it unless you had a.
Yeah, we had to scrape.
Military vehicle.
We had to scrape a foot of mud off, install a French drain through the frost. It was a lot of fun. That road can be nasty.
So if that happens while he's doing the construction, he's probably just gonna fix it himself so he can get trucks.
Get his trucks headed out, yeah.
Any comment from the public?
But the problem is, similar to what everybody here said, that this, you know, you've got twenty or thirty people who use that road every day.
Right.
And the folks who come in to do, like, drop their kids off or something, so it's gotta be passable.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I do people, I'm gonna ask them to mute. That person can go first.
Okay. Go ahead from the whoever, is this Joyce or?
Andrew, you had your hand up first. If you wanna go first?
No, go ahead, go ahead, Fred.
Okay. Um, Turcrall fifty-two Britnall, um, this is actually just a question back on number five, um, if we could revisit that for just a second. Uh, be a question to the chair and to Chief Buckley. The question is, um, so I'm not a civil engineer and I don't really know what the, you know, how deep the layers of the road are in terms of the present material. My question to Chief Buckley is, um, this concept of adding the five hundred and fifty-five cubic yards at the end, and we talked about the end being two years. In terms of grading the road, you know, I haven't lived here a long time. I've seen years where it's been graded two or three times, sometimes four or five times a year. That would imply that you would, I guess, question, would you still be grading that in that two-year period before the five hundred and fifty-five cubic yards are installed? And does that, um, affect the grading process if, if the material's not there until two years out?
I don't know if I understand the question.
What are you saying is that because we're gonna put this in, does that affect how you're going to go in and grade and do maintenance to the road?
Truth be told, we should be do, we should be adding gravel annually. We're trying to recover that project, recover that process. We've been remiss. We started adding some gravel and Britnall a year ago, and we're on the mend on that process. So no, I don't think extra gravel will impede our ability to grade the road. No. It would only help.
Fred, does that answer your question?
Not exactly. I, I was just getting at the point of it being added at the end. It, it, it means that you don't need it added, you know, incrementally along the way in order to be able to continually grade it.
It's all up to him. I mean, if the road is falling apart, the town will go in there and.
Grade it.
Upgrade it, yeah. Grade it.
Grade it, yeah.
But I also think if this is a fair statement during the process that Mr. Blair is building, this is gonna be the town DPW and Blair Builders will be maintaining the road.
Any, any damage to it per the previous?
The previous is already gonna be taken care of. So just so you know, if all of a sudden, you know, there's the potholes or anything happening during those two years, until the fresh gravel at the very end is put down, the, the road is gonna be maintained throughout the entire time.
Yeah.
It has to be.
It has to be.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, good. Is Andrew the next?
The other que, back to the.
Good.
Unfortunately, it's not possible to predict how often we regrade that road.
Correct.
Some seasons it's five times, some type of seasons it's once. It, it has a lot of frost, rain, all that stuff plays into that.
But that's the evaluation you guys make at the DPW when you, okay. Andrew, go ahead.
I think I'm all set. I just, I, I agree with the applicant and I want number six to be, um, written in as well, just so we don't forget about it. So that's been, uh, taken care of and addressed. Thank you.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, that was all of the discussion points that I'd come up with, so I'm gonna open it up to the board if they've got any more questions on the special permit.
Mister Chair, on item number six, I think you should be more clear and say from November one through April thirty.
Okay.
Because to May makes it unclear if you mean a six-month or a seven-month lockout.
You could, to make your, somebody make that condition, um, November first to April thirtieth, we'll put in there. And then again, it, it is, um, I, I'd leave out the open winter and frost and just put any work, uh, in that period will need approval from the DPW chief.
We did get one of the only manuals they have in Massachusetts for maintaining gravel roads. I attached that to that document. You can make that available.
Okay.
How would you like to have that be made available? That document was eighty pages or more?
Yeah.
Give it to the applicant.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Excellent. I'll open up to the board. Is there any other comments, questions about the special permit? Cause that's what I wanted to go through was their comments and see if there was any. And I think we've got a lot of the order of conditions already met, so we've killed two birds with one stone.
Who was our town tree warden?
The DPW.
That's, I thought, that's gonna make sure.
I'll open it up to Peter. Any more comments, questions? Chief Buckley, any comments, questions?
I was appointed as tree warden, but they didn't ask me first.
Oh, no, you, every DPW chief that in the last twenty years here, you're the victim of choice. Uh, Cle, any questions, concerns?
No, I think we definitely asked it out.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I just wanted to be thorough, cause this, this is one of the first ones that I've been involved with in fifteen years with the scenic road and special permit and an estate law.
I just have.
Go ahead, Dave.
This gonna require a conservation commission approval?
I will imagine that there will be some filing. I'm not gonna say it's gonna be an NLI. I would imagine at some point there'll be a filing.
For a building permit.
Yeah.
We would definitely need a concrete comment.
The only, only other thing I was gonna ask the board about for a condition, and maybe it's already in there, part of a boilerplate, that all permits are, that's the word I'm looking for. Dick, help me out with this, cause I remember we put in other stuff, all permits, applicable permits.
The applicant receives all necessary permits for the project.
Correct, yes. I was gonna ask the board if that's acceptable.
Yes.
I'm not sure I understand how that condition is enforceable.
Yeah.
I mean, if you have, ultimately, the building commissioner, if you issue the building permit, has to gather all the permits that are in place, in play for this project. But these are independent, these are, these are conditions and permits for independent bodies. You can't condition one body's approval on another's. So to have that in there, it's.
Okay.
It's, it's kinda.
I'm, I'm looking.
It's not advisable, in my opinion.
Nope, David, take your advice. I'm fine with that. So the viewpoint, the viewpoint will be the, I guess, tool to make sure that's enforceable then.
Yes, for example, like as in any of a number of dwellings in a subdivision will come forward, they'll be submitted.
Yeah, I know.
And then there's various approvals that have to happen, conservation, earthworks, planning board. A completeness review from the building inspector, health, uh, the assessor, town clerk.
Those are all the checkboxes.
And DPW.
Okay.
Should be opening, yeah.
Okay, I'm good. Then negate that comment. So, uh, chief, you get any other comments? Cle, any comments? I'll open it up to the public. Any other comments on this special permit?
I'd like just, uh, to say thank you to the board for giving us the opportunity to speak. Another meeting ran extremely long. Um, and thank you, you know, for being thorough, um, being an advocate of the town. Just wanna say thank you for, uh, allowing us to kinda go through this in pain-thanking detail.
Good for us. It's the first time, and we hopefully won't have to go through this a second day. We do this again.
Move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I have a motion to close the public hearing in a second. Any discussion? Uh, let's vote on it.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a unanimous, so. Public hearing closed. Um, the next opportunity is, uh, do we wanna, go ahead, Dave?
This is state the obvious. As per the standard conditions and per the conditions that were.
Yes. Yeah, the, the long list of, uh, conditions, so.
What's that?
Thank you. Um, I guess I will, next is since we've got four, do we wanna approve the special permit tonight? Um, and then go, or no, we've gotta get the, I apologize. We've gotta get the.
You've closed the hearing and you've approved the special permit, subject to the conditions. We'll then draft the decision.
Yes.
That decision will be reviewed and approved within the period of time.
Yes, so do we need to do our typical vote or do we wanna wait till you, we've got everything?
Typically, you vote on it.
Yeah, that's what I.
You close the hearing and then you vote to grant the special permit, subject to the conditions.
Yep.
And then we draft it and circulate that back to the board for.
And then after we read the special conditions, if any changes need to be made, we make them in the special.
Before we issue it, okay.
So we would approve the special permit tonight.
Subject to the conditions.
Which we would see in two weeks, probably.
It was a bit longer than that.
Okay, a month, well, whatever, two months, a month, it's.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure I know what the next process is gonna be.
Probably nine o'clock, it's twenty-four hours in a day.
Couple more meetings, we'll get the special conditions back, and then we have another vote at that point, or it's.
You voted them with, with conditions.
We're proving it tonight. I just, I just moved.
Marilyn seconded.
I seconded.
Yeah.
Did you get all that?
Not all.
To make it good. God, she's phenomenal. Uh, let's, uh, any discussion? Any discussion? I'll do Randy Jordan.
Why are you in discussions?
And I'll, uh, vote.
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is four to zero. That's the super majority. Special permit is approved on, uh, with conditions that will be brought to us for review in a future date. Now I would like to turn the gavel over to Mister Anderson, cause my party is over with. Chief, thank you for coming. I know after last night, you're two for two now for long meetings. So, not that I'm your boss, but take Friday off.
Sometime I wanna stop and talk to you about.
You do this all the time?
Good job.
Thanks. Thank you.
Fun job.
Oh, God, no, I, I feel your pain. Yes.
But I wanna talk a little bit about it.
I'm glad Marilyn thanked you because they, they did a great job and, uh.
I think at the end of it, just as a recap.
Doesn't feel that they're involved.
Only concern is their road. When it comes right down to it, it's like anybody else, they're concerned is their road, they're driving their cars, they gotta buy new shocks, they gotta buy new tires.
And Britnall is not the easiest road to walk.
So they're concerned it's gonna get even worse, and we hopefully, it will get better.
It's, it's not anything, it's better.
Well, I think some of the permits are already done.
Yeah.
Right.
You know.
Do you wanna know about the access to the road?
Yeah, what was that?
The, uh.
I'll have to drive. I know exactly where.
I wanna know the D C R.
Yeah, well, it's.
And she says, we have nothing to do with it. It's masked up.
Well, it looks kind of like a driveway. I've been up here for a while.
Well.
Like it was.
But then you made them crawl through every permit you can imagine.
It was put in as.
To do that. I think, I think you need an army corps permit, and we already have, they already have that.
Until Britnall.
Because.
The dam.
To Britnall, to Britnall. It comes out of Grizzly Road, which is.
I'll stop any time.
Comes out onto Britnall, but it was temporary because the access, the viewing access stinks.
I know much more about it than I want.
You built it?
In all the time it is.
Because they're supposed, the way Bear Hill was.
It was just a spot to dump.
There had to be two aggressors, because you can't have a, a four thousand, and I'm exaggerating, a four thousand-foot one-way road, which was.
Five thousand.
Five thousand, thanks.
A mile, a mile-long one-way road, yeah, I got you.
And so the intent.
Gentlemen, have a good one.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Joe.
Take Friday off, remember. Tell, tell Ron I said so, cause I love fun, get him irritated. Um, okay, it's all your boss. You got anything left?
Yes.
You got anything around for the next.
Is it used?
Yeah, lots of how to cross there.
Multi-planning assistance update?
Multi-planning assistance update. Uh, basically, uh, this has to do with our N P A hours, which we get twelve, basically, something like that.
Twelve plus an additional twelve for participation, uh, with planned staff attending various meetings. Also, people on the executive committee attending meetings, we get a total of twenty-four.
And if I'm not mistaken, we have basically committed all of them to the various projects that we've got going, the C M I B C, uh, the master plan, and the town center study committee, and.
It's accessory dwelling permit by law that the board is complying to.
And Norm, I wanted to mention, with that being mentioned, that, that sort of goes into number ten. Isn't Dave, we're asking him to manage that?
Well, we can talk about it.
Okay, I just, I'll, okay, yeah.
And he has.
If I could just add that, that is an important planning resource, because it is staff support that the regional planning commission supplies to the towns. It's just for the towns asking. So if the town has projects that it can't fully handle on its own, because of staff limitations, the original planning commission's available, and that's just what they do. Um, and it'd been a great help on these projects which Norm just mentioned.
But up until Dave came on, we really didn't use those hours unless.
And just to let you know that there were sixteen out of forty that have zero hours. Just to let you know.
Yeah. I, I thought that was put in person.
You, I didn't know if you had to go through some of the subdivisions, so I'm.
Oh, you already went through them, you're good.
All done.
Thank you, thank you for everything tonight. Thanks, Cle.
So, to me, for crying out loud, I, I'm, I'm very thankful for Craig Chase that we're utilizing the hours and they're not being wasted, like I've seen before.
Well, we didn't, we didn't have a planner before this, so we didn't have any.
We didn't have to do anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, uh, Z B A matter. Uh, basically, it's Jackie O'Brien's.
Oh, good.
Uh, application to the Z B A for an accessory apartment.
Aye.
New apartment.
Do we, we don't have a bylaw for that yet, do we, Norm?
No, but, did you, did you.
It's coming along.
Okay.
Did you read? I, I tell you, I was, uh, what's the problem? Why isn't, uh, C and C our town council?
Who's C and C?
Cranston and Cranston.
Oh. I, I don't know. I, I guess, well, this is an opportunity for us to comment, I guess, on it.
Is that what they're looking for us to?
Yeah, the statute.
Sorry, Dave.
I, I feel for crying out loud, after, after reading C and C, Cranston, Paul Cranston's, uh, issue on here, and I don't know if you had the opportunity to see, that the line does fall through out of that house.
Yeah.
And it is given a thirty-foot leeway, which would include that. So what the heck is it?
That's not, that's not staff's position. Uh, staff's position is that because the lot itself has frontage in a more restrictive zoning district, then under the language of seven D, I'll just read it. So, where the boundary of a district divides a lot having frontage on a street, which it does, in a more restricted district, so this is T C and it's R forty. The more restrictive zoning district is R forty, the provisions of the bylaw covering the more restricted portion of the lot shall extend to the entire lot. So what that is saying is that the R forty applies to the entire lot. Uh, that's the interpret, that's the, the reading of the building commissioner, and I happen to agree with that.
But T C one is the larger frontage.
Yeah, but it's restricted.
It doesn't specify, it doesn't specify some percentage of frontage. It ought to establish that. It just says, it just says frontage. So there's frontage, this frontage is a portion of the R forty and there's a portion of the T C. R forty is more restrictive than R T C, so as we read it, the R forty requirement applies to the entire lot. Thus, thus the variance from the area requirement of to do the second dwelling. Thus, thus the variance from the area requirement, uh, to do the second dwelling unit on the lawn. And that's the advice that we provided.
And to me, all the work that she's put in for this town and she's getting this shaft.
Well, well, no, not, not so getting shaft.
C B A allows the, they can take exceptions, right, Norm?
Well, hopefully.
I, I'm just looking at from our planning board point of view, I believe our job is to, if we have any objection to this petition, we say we have objection. If we don't have any objection, we give them a letter saying we have no objection to this petition.
Is there any other lots that are like this? That would be our objection, in my opinion, that we should straighten out. Why did, yeah.
So.
It should've been written in there somehow.
Go ahead Marilyn, 'cause I'm, I'm struggling with it.
When we did the bylaw, we should've, if this lot, you know, incorporates more than fifty percent or whatever, the, it shouldn't be the more restrictive.
He's saying.
Uh, let me just try, if you don't mind. Um, what, this is part of the reason why we are working on accessory apartment bylaw. Because our vision of the accessory apartment bylaw is not to have, is not, is not to have an area requirement. The requirements would be size of the dwelling, number of bedrooms, but not an area requirement because it's absolutely unnecessary for accessory dwelling, you know, bylaw. So we're just working with what we've got. It's a two-family for the purposes of what you would like to do and we've advised accordingly, so.
So I, I just wanna make sure that I understand in reading what, uh, Paul Cranston said. Paul Cranston's disagreeing with Commissioner McCray.
I don't believe so because the application itself is for a dimensional relief from the, from the frontage, from the area requirement.
I guess that's where.
They have sought relief from the area. See, well, if you wanna do a two-family, you have to have one point five times the area of the underlying zoning districts, R forty is forty-five thousand, whatever it is. So times, one and a half times that is about sixty-five thousand. Their relief that they seek for their application is the area relief. They're not seeking, they're not seeking an administrative appeal of the building commissioner's determination. That was in there for the building commissioner to review. They've added it to their packet for their purposes, but the relief that they seek is from the area requirement. They're not seeking, they're not saying this is not what we're going after. Instead, we're going after an administrative appeal based upon this from the attorney. That's not what they're doing. That's their background. So as far as we're concerned.
So, what they're asking for is they want relief from the one point five requirement of, of a, of a dual pile, or, what I'm looking.
Two dwelling units.
Two dwelling units on a single piece property.
Connected.
Connected, yes.
That's a relief. That's the dimensional relief.
That's what they're asking for.
The area requirement. That other information they put in under their own need to put it in. I don't know why it's there. That's not what, you know, that's not what relief they're seeking, so. It's conce, so that's, that's what.
So, my understanding of this is this is an older piece of property that didn't have the R forty when it was built, correct? This, because it's a half acre.
Yeah, this was part of what, Laurel Acres.
Yes. So it, it was.
Hawthorne.
I think it comes in when it was, I think the T C comes afterwards, 'cause this goes back to the late sixties.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So this, I don't even know if there was an R forty zone back then, was there?
Was it R, no?
Not then.
No. I, I didn't think so back then. I, so, 'cause I'm looking at this thing, it's a half acre.
Back then.
It's got a hundred and thirty foot, which we need a hundred and fifty for R forty, if I'm not mistaken.
Hundred and fifty foot.
So this doesn't even qualify for R forty back in the, if, if it was R forty. So, my question is, is when they're before the Z B A, which is asking our opinion, is they're asking relief from the R forty? Is that what they're asking?
Yes.
That's our opinion, right?
They're asking for the R forty requirement.
That's what I was trying to get to. So what do?
The R forty requirement is a hundred and fifty feet?
No, the issue's not with respect to frontage, the issue's respect to area. The bylaw requires only an increased area for a two-family. It doesn't have any, any specification for frontage. So frontage is not the issue here.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm just struggling with. It was an old, it was an older property and now we're trying to put on the, what I'm looking for. The, the newer conditions, when the house was built under a, uh, if you wanna call it grandfather clause. And so because of that, I'm guessing the they're saying that you can't build it. You can't build anything to it. You can leave the house there, but you can't add an accessory dwelling 'cause you don't have the lot size.
Yeah, unless you get a relief.
From the Z B A.
Yeah, so there is an avenue, it's not absolutely prohibited, so there's a zoning avenue.
Me personally, if, if I said yes to this, I don't think we're creating a precedent, are we, by, because it's an individual lot.
All there, all the, all we are due to give to the Z B A is an indication whether we object or we don't object. That's it.
I'm, as the board member, I don't object to this. That's my opinion.
I don't either.
I don't either.
I don't see any, any reason to object.
But I would love to, to, not to have this.
As far as how many other lots, you know, I'm just kinda trying to prove in my mind.
That it can have the same.
The, you know, the boundaries that we set for the T C one and T C two district. All of those numbers are still buzzing around in my head from the five, six, seven, eight page description that I wrote up on that.
Too bad we didn't run it up to the road.
And Norm.
Again, we, we ran the zones parallel to Main Street.
Yeah, I know.
Which, that's what, that makes sense.
And then we set it back two hundred feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Like, yeah.
Two or three hundred feet.
But, could there be some other lots in the same
predicament, yeah.
Situation? Yeah, not a lot.
Right.
In, in what she's building, she's still, she's not up against the property. It's, it's got more setback than the original house and it's got the same setback from the road to where the, the house lines match up.
Yeah.
And the back still, I mean, overall, I don't see this as a, what's the word I'm looking for? As a, as a ugly addition?
It's not degrading anything.
Yeah, that's it, Norm, that's what I'm saying. So that's why I, me personally, my opinion to the board is, I don't have an issue with this. I, I understand that it doesn't follow authority, but I don't have an issue with it.
If it did follow, we wouldn't be asking.
Yeah, well, she couldn't actually build the house if this, she had this piece of property today, 'cause it doesn't conform to the R forty district.
It was created before the district began its grant.
Oh, it is, okay. I didn't know that. Something I just, I just wondered if this piece of property had no house on it. Okay, that's new.
Well, if the lot was created, right?
Yeah.
There was a house lot, then you'd always be able to build a house on it.
Right. Okay, that's new.
Okay, and were there any, I mean, were there any abutters, were there any issues? Although we go out and ask them, but.
I'm not aware of any. No one has called specifically on this item, who was in a butter?
And, and Commissioner McCray just had the concern 'cause of the square footage.
We actually received one letter from him in butter and it was in favor of the project.
Yeah. I talked, I talked a little bit with Jackie and she seemed at least indicate that everybody's perfectly happy with it. So.
So will we, uh, to pass a vote on?
Whether we approve or disapprove?
Well, not approve or disapprove.
Oh, it's.
Whether we have any, whether, whether we have any.
Have an opinion or don't have an opinion.
Whether we have any concern.
Have your concern.
Yes, I make a motion that the planning board send a letter to the Z B A indicating we have no issues with the application.
Call a second.
Oh, yes, and then, if there's anybody on the Z B A that thinks different.
They're gonna come hunting us?
I'm gonna send them your way, Dick.
Oh, find them.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Your favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Last item, goals and objectives.
Wash my car once a week.
Yeah.
I will not speak mine.
Yeah.
Is this just open discussion?
Talk, talk a little bit about, about this with, with Dave today. Because basically this is, he has been directed, I guess, to provide goals and objectives.
To?
Mr. Ron.
To the, yeah, to the
T A.
Town Administrator.
Every, every department head.
Why?
He's the boss.
It's a thing they do these days.
Yeah.
Yep, trust me, I gotta do the same thing as a lowly engineer. I gotta come up every year with goals and objectives.
And in most cases.
And pray tell, how many years has our select board done goals and objectives and where does that ever led us?
Well, they're having an off-site meeting next week to have a, with the, with the T A. They figured that out.
And anyway, uh, you know, there, there can be a question if, for example, Dave writes up a few things, and there's plenty of things that can be put down for goals and objectives, as to whether those are his goals and objectives or whether it's the planning board's goals and objectives. Okay?
He didn't specify.
Well, I think just in general, what's happened in terms of projects, the projects that we brought forth, whether it's the master plan, town center study committee, the D L T A technical projects for the ag bylaw to be written, what it worked with the ag bylaw, ag commission today on land use preservation ideas or the scenic road by, or the scenic road, uh, D L T A project to encourage tourism. All these projects have been vetted through the planning board as a matter of course, because it's, we, I, you know, it's good to get the initial discussion here to see if the planning board endorses these. So, I think a lot of what would be proposed are things that are already in the pipeline that the planning board has already endorsed in its capacity of, of guiding policy.
And, and anyway, I, I just was kinda thinking that, uh, we should, uh, by, by some form or whatever, adopt whatever these goals and objectives as the planning board's objectives as well. Okay, so that, uh, our town administrator can come back and say, hey, wait a minute, whose objectives are these?
Yes.
Yours or the planning board's?
Then my next step, Norm, would be, do we get to work?
And it's all of ours.
Do we get to work with Ron when, when he does his review, since he's?
Yes. Now, just to put a little, and I'm not saying this would be the way to go, but would there be a benefit to Dave having his own goals and objectives? In addition to, uh, did he already spell out the term? In addition to us having goals and objectives?
Well, I think there are some that come out.
That's a good one.
Like the heights.
You know what I'm saying?
You know, the work of the rural development industrial commission is, is, um.
We can't put that one in, I'm just telling you right now.
No, this is, no, this is gonna be the first one, absolutely.
I know.
Can I make a motion?
But the, I, I mean, which isn't part of us, it's part of your development portion, is the R D I C. You with the team brought in one point six million dollars worth of revenue into this town.
Well, fortunately, we were able to find a willing participant who, you know,
Yeah.
applied to the R F P, was willing to work through that process and had development experience, so.
Well, from our perspective, you, day-to-day activities of, of handling any applicants that come in for A and Rs, subdivisions, consult with anybody that has planning board issues or questions. I mean, that's a day-to-day staff that you do.
Working with the building commissioner on enforcement matters.
Correct. And then you work with the chairman and anything that's come up with questions. I, I, I mean, that alone is, is a large portion of.
His, his hours during the week. I'd like to know how much in various categories is he serving?
I could do that if necessary.
No, I don't, no, no, I'm just.
I mean, it was justified in the, in back statement, so we're definitely prepared to justify it.
Anyway, I just, I just like, I just like it, like to be, you know, that these are joint goals and objectives.
I agree. I think that maybe if David can come up with.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree with whatever he comes up with.
That's what I'm saying too. Like, if he comes up with something and says, this is, this is what I would like to see over the next year or two years.
The only thing I had that flashed across my mind is, Norm, when you and I and, and the, and the group at the time, and this was a long frickin' time ago, went through the subdivision rules and regulations and, and the open space when we did the subdivision. How, how was that to affect you? You remember how it affected you? It affected me at that time greatly because for crying out loud, I learned everything about the subdivision.
Yeah, 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 until you, until you really dive into something, uh, you know, you don't, you, and.
But, that's where, and to me, it's too bad.
That was two thousand five, two thousand six, 'cause right, right as we passed them, ten frickin' subdivisions came in to be approved before they were passed.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I'm, I'm exaggerating, but.
But no, open space, it, it started at that time for him, but it was so good that we went through, it seemed like we went through every one of those items and that thing to learn, and we, we learned it that way, you know.
Our thing is, there, there is so much routine stuff happening.
I know.
There's no way we can do it.
So I just brought this to the board's attention because I, of the collaborative effort between the planning board, I appreciate working with this board and staff. And that, there's nothing that's really coming out from staff that hasn't been vetted through the planning board. You know, with the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, we've talked about that. I think there's buy-in that that was something worth pursuing, so that's what we're doing. You know, so I think that's, I don't know if I have any individual ones. I think anything individual I wanna bring here to have it validated is whether it's something to be pursued or not. You know, uh, that's generally how I feel.
I just wanted you to have the opportunity.
Well, I think.
You know what I mean? That's all I looked at it is.
Working with this board collaboratively and collectively.
I remember. This is, is, uh, building permits that were issued.
Uh-oh, that's real close.
Biggest one ever done. And to me, one of the things that popped up here is HUD was mentioned twice and, and for permits issued. And it's one of the things I feel that I wish we could've had in, in our subdivision rules and regulations, low-income housing. When a subdivision comes in, it has to be a certain percentage. Somehow, and I think there were other towns and whatever that have, has, does have this in their thing.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if there are any other towns that has really.
I would be surprised if Holden had it in it.
I missed, I missed it. What was it?
Low-income housing. When a subdivision come in, uh, a certain percent or whatever has to be, you know.
Yes, there's vari, see, it's not a conventional subdivision, because a conventional subdivision, as long as it meets area and furniture, pretty much has to be granted unless there's some substantial deficiency. But there are things, it's a special permit housing development.
Open space.
You make, no, well, I've, I've seen it referred to as a balanced housing development.
Yeah.
What that means is that you get a density bonus for the number of total lots created if you have a certain number that are affordable under the forty B program.
What did we do off the one off sixty-eight? That's the one that we initially tried to do that for, that was.
But we got screwed on it.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. I remember that well, but we were trying, we were, we were giving him, this was when Julian was building it. Actually, it started out Craig Beck and then it went to Julian.
Yep.
There was, like, two affordable houses had to be built.
Correct.
In that subdivision.
Right.
And that was the agreement we allowed. I think, did they have, he had a longer driveway and then there were some questions on how it was entering.
Yeah.
So the, the negotiations with the planning board is you put in two affordable housing and we can give you some latitude on other stuff, and that was the negotiation that went on. I don't know, I don't know if that's correct, Dave, or wrong, but that's what we ended up doing.
I think what I'm referring to specifically is a special permit category.
I was gonna say.
In a bylaw that.
Because we were trying to do it without any sort of bylaw.
No, no, we, we were, I hate to use the word, we were winging it basically and.
We're trying to, we're trying to come up with an idea how to do it.
It's possible to do it through a special permit housing process. Um, where it falls apart is that to get some number of affordable, usually you have to have a big number of non-affordable for the developer to make it work.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As they present their signed argument. So it's not as effective a tool as you might think it is, at least not in this.
You gotta have a big subdivision where there's gonna be some monies being made.
There has to be some incentive to do it.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Well, it's, it's either that or, I, I'm, I'm getting scared because I, I really feel, like I said, that it's Boston and Worcester is gonna be coming up and saying, you guys are all done. From now on, it's all affordable housing, period. You've got too much, yeah.
Can they do that?
Hey, in this day and age, never say never.
Norm, we need to sell our houses, kids. You see what your house is worth? Well, we need to sell our houses, kids. Have you seen what your house is worth? I told my, we're going to the Carolinas, cause right now my house is twice what I paid for it. And I know it's just paper, but it was a surprise. I had one subject to bring up, and it may not be great, but there's, I just got involved from the standpoint of, the, the town had passed a budget and Dave had a salary that was involved in that budget that was passed by the town. And there was some air made somewhere.
Maybe you just wanna talk in general.
That's what I'm trying to do. I don't wanna give any numbers. There were just some salary issues with the planner and some other people in town that were non-exempt or exempt employees. And their numbers for their salaries were wrong. Non-union. So they weren't gonna get their 2% COLA.
Yeah.
So that's been taken back. Basically, they're, they're getting the number that wasn't passed to town. It's what their salaries was last year, not the number that was approved by the town, by the town during our meeting. So in our case, there, the, our budget for our planner was taken back. So I, who is not happy about that and really irritated, is we donated $5,000 to the planner's salary in, for this year. And now that they're taking money away from the planner, I'm saying what you're taking away that the town approved for that number, I want it given back to our revolving fund, not to the general fund.
That's correct.
That's what I'm asking the board for.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't know how we send that to Mr., to the town TA, but that's what I'm asking the board.
Through the town TC.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, I know it's not a big number, but.
I don't care.
If you're not gonna give it to our planner, then I want it back in our budget.
Yes.
That's my opinion. That's the only thing I got to say, and I'm shutting up now.
I'll add it to town council.
Town council.
Through the planning board, town council, to the TA, that we want our money back.
Not all of it, just the difference of.
Just the difference.
Correct.
I'm not sure about getting town council involved.
Oh, I would.
I wasn't going that far. I was gonna have a letter to the town administrator for the planning board.
I would not hesitate. We are elected board, and if they're taking that money, which we had done, and they'd taken it away from us to go someplace else, I want that money back, and I want a letter from the town council.
And I guess I'll open my mouth, it'll begin, if the fall happens and they restore the COLAs, like typically has happened at this town for years, I have no problem taking that money out of our revolving fund and replacing it back into that 5,000. But right now, we don't know if that's gonna happen, right?
I'm just having a que, I'm just curious about this. I, so if there's a budget surplus now, what has to happen procedurally to address that issue, if anything?
Budget surplus from?
Right now.
In the town?
Budget surplus?
Oh, it doesn't, and I'm not, I'd have to ask Karen, but I think that goes to the, the free cash number that's certified at the, in the fall? Any surpluses goes to free cash? That's my understanding. That's why there was such a big push to get the RDIC in before June 30th, because any money that comes in goes to free cash this year, otherwise it's put onto next year and we can't get access to it.
Correct.
But, but I, Dave, I'm, I'm not talking 100% too, but I thought any surplus goes to free cash with all, all town meetings. I don't disagree with you. I just don't know how that's.
I'm discouraged, I'm, I'm.
Yeah. Well, that surplus is what I'm asking to come back to our revolving fund.
I see.
Not go into the general fund is what I, I guess I was asking for. So in the fall, if it is restored, we'll restore the, whatever the dollar value is, back to what we offered to donate for the town planner. Right now, I don't feel like giving it to the town. It's our money.
Correct.
And we, we, we pigeonned it, whatever earmarked it for our town planner. That's my opinion.
Just a couple of questions. Was that number around even 5,000 dollars?
The number that we're asking back or?
That we were contributing.
I thought it was 5,000 on the.
The board voted for 5,000 dollars.
Okay.
Even.
5,000 even, okay.
And it was approved, and then the town took it, is basically what's happened.
The town took the, the five, they, well, let me rephrase that. They worked it in at their budget for the planner's salary as a contribution from the planning board. And now what I'm saying is because that number that was used and approved at town meeting is not the number that they're going to pay the planner, the difference, I went back into our revolving fund instead of going into the general fund and being used for whatever.
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at.
Using our money to go to DPW to buy a load of salt.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, not that I don't think that's important, I just. Yeah, I'll leave it.
It's our money, because we are elected board.
And, and I know it's not a lot, but it's, it's, I'm a principle guy, and this is principle right now.
It's taking me some time, but I think I'm coming around on it.
Okay.
Definitely was not sure, but if we don't do that, it kind of opens them to any money that we give them, they can do whatever the hell they want of it.
Correct. And we earmarked this for our planner to help out because of a difficult year.
Yeah.
So I, I just, again, I, I'm frustrated about the whole situation, but I don't have, I'm not in control of budgets or anything like that, so.
I'd be in favor of a letter to town council and town administrator.
You can give him an option. You can talk to him in stating what is gonna happen if he does not agree, or they, or whoever, powers to be.
This is why I don't wanna be chairman right now, cause I'm, you don't wanna put a German and a Scot in this situation. You will do it, and you will not talk to me!
No, we need this, I don't wanna see a precedent set.
No, that's what I was getting at. That's why I brought it up, and I apologize.
Oh, I'm glad you brought it up, cause I did not know that.
Right now, I think we set a precedence by just doing it.
Yeah, but I don't wanna set a, another precedent by not doing anything about it.
I've conditioned on a precedent.
Yeah.
But the only reason I, I say town council, because I, I want, I feel sometimes they need some, some kind of communication from somebody higher up and say, this is the way it should be, or this is what should happen.
What would you expect back from town council?
That we are elected board.
We have the authority to do this?
And they, they overstuck their authority by taking the money and to put it into the general.
Well, I don't know if they've done that. I'm just, I'm just sort of getting ahead of it because the year just started. So I, I just wanna make sure that if they're not giving it to our planner, then we're gonna hold on to it. And if in November, during the special town meeting, that the COLAs are given to not only our planner, but the other people in, in the town, then we'll restore that money to that fund, but until then, you're not gonna get access to it unless you plan to use it.
All right, then who would, who would be the, in line? Who should you talk to to find out?
I, I think it, Norm, I think it's the town administrator, because he's the CFO, so to speak. The FICOM has no control over this.
If I may, I think that the select board plays a big part in that, cause at, at the discussion at last night's meeting, Ron presented his recommendation for what he thinks should be done in this situation.
Think should be done, okay.
Ultimately, I believe the decision is up to the select board, and they've continued this discussion to the next meeting because there are some unanswered questions involving other departments as well.
Okay.
So maybe a letter before.
Maybe we should go to the select board.
Maybe that's a good point, Norm, that, I, I like that, that this is the planning board's opinion on whatever you decide. I mean, what if they decide to say, well, they're gonna give all the exempts what was in the budget? Cause see, I, I, me personally, I have a hard time of being at town meeting, voting a budget, voiding line items, and then being told that, no, it's not right.
Right.
Excuse me? The town said this is what's gonna happen. Again, it's just me, I, I, I get frustrated when somebody pulls the rug up from underneath my, my, my feet and saying, no, again, I, I can't do that. You know, I don't know. I'm, I'm sorry. This is a really painstaking issue with me because of, I was, as a town constituent, I voted on a budget and approved it, and now it's not being used the way it was voted on. That's my problem. I'm sure the select board's probably in that same situation where that's why they're taking time to think about this. So again, but I, I like the idea, Norm, that we should probably bring this before the select board and tell them this is what we as a board are thinking should be done if you say no and you go back to what's recommended by the TA, which, listening to that meeting, I think it was, go back to the numbers that were actual, not what was approved by the town.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
For those X number of employees.
Yeah, those X number of employees that are non-union.
Non-contract.
Yep, and non-contract, yeah, thanks.
Now, we're the only board that is contributing to a position like this.
Yeah, we're. We're the red-headed stepchild.
I'm just, and he, he even over, in, 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 in my brain wants to write. Most importantly, Dave, I don't think.
I don't think we should bring him into this. It's not his.
It's not, it's not.
He cannot take any of it.
I don't, no, this.
I don't, I don't want him involved. This is the planning board's.
Take our money, you let us be involved, and how are you gonna spend it? I mean, it's.
Exactly, Kevin.
It's our money, and then you take it and spend it wherever you want. That's not fair to the board and the elected officials. It's like Dick said, that we, we were, we hadn't amendment on the town warrant for the 5,000 dollars that got passed, and now it got taken away from us.
And see, what they did this year, and again, I apologize, this is because the chairman sleeps at my house. Last year, they only put in the amount of salary that was being taken out of the budget, and they, there was no place in there that said how much the planning board was contributing. So there was, you know, the, the salary last year for those exempt, at least in our case, I should say our case, didn't show the actual salary. This year, it was decided to put the actual salary in with our contribution. That was the difference between last year and this year. But there was an incorrect number put in, so that's, that's what got me a little bit irked, is you put an incorrect number in, then you go back and from, take, take away saying that you're gonna have to have last year's salary. And I was like, well, then I want the money back in our pocket. And we'll just give him a stipend. I said that aloud too.
I don't see how there's any other choice. That's my opinion.
Do we need to decide tonight?
The next select board's meeting will be in two weeks.
Having a letter, maybe beforehand, or at least the select board being aware that we have an issue.
We're on TV, the select board will be.
Aware.
Aware.
Yep.
At the very least, I need some time to write a letter, unless anybody else wants to do it.
I will not volunteer for this, cause what my letter will be with.
And you might be wanting a letter from me.
I, I, maybe it's, Norm, that the letter is simple. We wanna discuss with the select board our funding of, of our, our planners. I don't know.
Salary.
Salary, I guess, yeah. Not, don't go into too much detail. We just wanna talk about it, cause.
Contribution to it.
Yeah, yeah, I like the, contribution to it. Maybe it can be that simple.
You think it should be that, that general, that simple?
Why not?
Cause that, that then means you gotta go to the select board in person.
And I feel if we could.
When's that meeting, Tamika?
July 26th.
Damn it, I'll be here. I'm gonna be in Chicago.
We have Zoom.
I'm gonna be in Chicago.
You could call in.
Do I really wanna call in while I'm in Chicago at Navy Pier drinking? No.
It's a good time.
You really don't want me calling in in Navy Pier drinking.
I, I'd be more than happy to come in and, for support.
I'll be here for our meeting, but the 26th select board, I won't be available.
Oh, okay.
I'll be in Chicago. It's old Karen, so.
Wouldn't hurt to hold it off two weeks till you're back.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Yeah. I, I will come to the first of August. Yeah.
But if they're bringing it up at the next meeting, shouldn't we be in, at least, they should know that.
Cause if it's not an agenda item, we can't talk about it.
What's that?
If, if you were to come after that meeting, you'd have to get them to add it as an agenda item, so it's be able to talk about it.
It's already on the agenda for two weeks from now, correct?
That's, that's my understanding, it was left open to them.
You know my opinion, so, I mean, I don't need to be there.
They know your opinion. They can look at those.
Yeah, and Karen knows my opinion, cause I've told her, so I don't think they're calling the FICOM in on this. I think it's just gonna be.
Not my understanding, no.
They're just gonna be dealing with the, the TA and the board of selectmen. Maybe we just, Norm, get it out as an agenda item instead of sending the letter. Letting, letting Linda know that we wanna discuss it at the next select board meeting.
Well, that, that's why I was saying, you know, if we could hold off to the second or the next one.
Well, what, yeah, I'm wondering what would happen now. If we wrote the letter asking for the second, would they then move it another week? You know what I mean?
I like that, Kevin, is, ask the select board.
Then you'll be back, then.
We'll have the full board available for that meeting in August.
Could they bump it for another two weeks?
Well, he, he, they don't necessarily have to complete, complete their discussions on that on the next meeting.
True, yeah.
If it's really easy to get put onto an additional agenda.
If we, if we ask for, in two weeks or four weeks or whatever it is for current law, they don't have to accept that.
No, they don't.
If, if we ask to be done the agenda, they will.
I know, they probably will.
I just didn't want this to go to the wayside, that's all I wanted.
Thank you for bringing it up.
It's very important, and I don't wanna precedent set in this case.
No. And, and again, I, I don't wanna, at, at least in my past experience with the town, a lot of people were made whole in the fall town meetings, cause we've always seemed to come up with free cash. I can't guarantee that, but I think, Norm, in the last 10 years that this has happened, it's, it's been taken care of, at least.
You know, well, you know, I, I don't, I don't know about.
The, the, the town clerk is the one I remember the most of. When Anita was non-COLA'd, and that's the one that just comes to my mind. They took care of it in the, in the fall town meeting, but.
All, all I just remember is, you know, at fall town meetings, it, it is amazing that things get turned down, an annual town meeting all of a sudden.
Or fixed.
Hey, we need a new DPW truck. Can't have it in June. Oh, November? Yep, you got it.
Yeah. Free cash all of a sudden became available.
Yeah.
Anyhow.
Okay. I'll see what I can write up and probably get it to you people.
Okay. Or you could call Linda, maybe, Norm, and just ask him, tell him, or, you know, have a, a department, department or anyone put in the letter.
I want a paper trail.
Okay. All right, that's, I'm good with that. Dave, I'm sorry to put you on the spot about this, but it's really hurt the hell out of me.
I have a.
Maybe it's appropriate for after this meeting, cause I don't.
All right, no problem.
A quick item, I have some insider information that today is his birthday.
Are you kidding me? What, you're 62 now?
78.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Dick. Let's go over to the tavern and do some shots.
I did Britfield, so my leg is killing me, so I just go home.
Hey, I got mine fixed. I went to my child when I was in Fort Wayne this past weekend, went to my childhood shoe store that's still operational after 83 years. And phenomenal people. She goes, I, I know what your problem is with your legs. Your feet roll. I'm like, really? She goes, you need to get in tennis shoes that are good. So put me in shoes. I walked for the rest of the weekend, felt phenomenal. I'm going, God bless Fred Tenius, I love that man. But just shoes, I couldn't believe that. Shoes and arch support made a complete difference on the knees and the hips.
Really?
Yep. You need a.
Strange you should say that.
No, cause I've always, me, I buy them off the web. It's a balance, just buy one. Well, they weren't fitting right. They weren't wide enough. They, they didn't have the stability support for my sides, and that was what was killing the knees and the hips. So, piece of advice.
So much pushing that clutcher in that track, though. So much pushing that clutcher in that track, though.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Oh, my God.
Ten o'clock.